City Council Meeting for Order. Today is Thursday, May 22nd, 2025, and it is 5:30 PM. At this time, we'll have Councilwoman Saldana to lead us in an invocation, and Councilwoman Carrasco do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, as we come before you this afternoon, Heavenly Father, we thank you. Thank you for this day of life that you have given us, Heavenly Father. And, Lord Father God, as we get together this evening, Lord Father God, to look at over this agenda item that pertains to our community. Father God, give us the wisdom, Heavenly Father. Give us the direction, Lord Father God, to make the right decisions that will benefit our community. Lord Father God, all glory and honor belongs to you and you only, Lord. Father God, thank you, Lord Father God, for each and everyone that's here today, Heavenly Father, that has things in their heart that they need, that they want. Father God, and for the council that's here together, Lord Father God, if we can be of one mind and of one accord, Lord Father God, to help this community and propel it forward into the future, Lord Father God. Lord, I thank you, Lord Father God, for the wisdom that we have had, because you said in your word, Lord Father God, you give us wisdom freely if we ask for it. Father God, I thank you, Lord Father God, for all that you do for us, Heavenly Father, in Jesus' holy name I pray. Amen.
Amen. The Republicans who stood by and the United States of America and the children of America for which it stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, infinite, and just as this world.
Let me record that all council members are present tonight. And at this time, if you have your cell phone, please make sure it's on silent. I will open the floor for public comments. This is a reminder that you're limited to three minutes and that the council cannot respond to you. And if you do have a comment, please stand up at the podium, state your name, and then your comment.
Okay, my name is Dorinda Mian. I'm the Executive Director of the West Side Pecos Museum. I won't take too much of your time, because I know you have more pressing matters to go to. But this is close to our heart. Pecosville statue, ever since the train derailment, we have been missing it. Our visitors have been missing it. They've asked, in fact, these last few weeks, we've had people ask us worries, what's going to happen, blah, blah, blah. So we would like for you to consider, respectfully consider, bringing it back to our location. We enjoy it there, our visitors enjoy it there. We have numerous people just go there and take pictures, and then go to the booths, and then wander into the museum. And we talk them into seeing the museum, and then talk them into staying in town, to the restaurants and stuff. So we kind of try to keep them in the community. So I really think that we need to keep the statue here, if not, in this neighborhood. But it's an asset to the downtown. I know that we're doing other things on other parts of town, but we need to do stuff here, too. And we've gotten so used to seeing this statue. If you see the pictures, and the first one, you'll see it was unveiled in 2017. A large number of Chamber of Commerce people that went out there. And into the ride, you see a photograph of what it looked like. And when we would drive to the little parking lot, we'd see it, and it looked kind of sad just by itself. So we approached the City Council in March of 2019, and there's my sketch, it's kind of dark, I'm sorry about that, to beautify that area, landscape it, and they were agreeable. So in 2020, in January, we started the work. And as you can see, how beautiful it looked with the plants and all that, the spur. And those are different things we've done throughout the years for Pecosville. I mean, even way before I started putting this. 1995, we unveiled the Pecosville Room on our second floor. In 1996, the Pecos Post Office issued a Folks Heroes Committee Stamp with Pecosville in it. In July 12, 1996, the post office officially declared the museum as a station. They had to declare it a station in order for them to issue the first day stamps there. So for one day, the museum was a post office, and it was really cool. We had a lot of people, and they had their envelope stamp with an official Pecosville stamp. And that same day, we also had the Pecosville Day. We had a very famous author, I'm sure some of you have heard of him, Stephen Kellogg, who illustrated the Pecosville Book, one of the Pecosville Books. He did sketches to the crowd, a lot of kids were there. And he also autographed his book. And then I give you statistics on the amount of people we've had through the museum. This is not counting the people that go there when we're not there, when we're closed or are day, we're closed that or after hours. This is the amount of people that we have. So seeing the statue, because they always kind of make a little comment, oh, we like that statue, and they show us the picture they take in front of it and all that. But I know a lot of you have seen on Facebook and on different social media the different things that the community does, from the quinceañeras to graduation. People go post in front of the Pecosville, and of course, they couldn't this year for graduation. But there's a lot of activity that goes on, believe it or not, even after hours or during our museum hours. We see them out there taking pictures, and then they'll post some. So it's good publicity, and the foreign visitors love the Pecosville. They're always talking, they want us to tell them the story about Pecosville. So we tell them the story about Pecosville, and that's it. Thank you for your time. We want them back.
Debbie Thomas, a merchant downtown. And besides having a special relationship with the museum and Pecosville, just the last two months, all the photographs downtown of proms, graduation, wedding pictures, everything is great. But more than 40 years ago, when the town had another wonderful boom and got to stretch out and go to Eddie Street, it just about killed downtown, and it was vacant. And the ballpark and everything out there is wonderful. But don't take everything, because then they'll have no reason to come downtown again. And we realize that the property belongs to the railroad, and the city may at some time decide not to lease it. But you do own a city park across the street. And we just wanted you to think about it and keep us right there.
Good afternoon again, City Council members, and I'm Mayor. My name is Jerry Miramontes, and I work for the Pecos Housing Financial Corporation. I'm the financial coordinator. And I brought a couple of my tenants that we worked on. Ms. Rosa Carrasco is a person that we helped with a project early on. And right now, we are doing project number 52, and that is Ms. Sulema Tercero, which is right behind her. So I'll let them speak for themselves.
Hello, my name is Rosa Carrasco. And I am here to thank John Salcido, Jerry Miramontes, his organization, because my house needed a lot of repair, which I was not able to have done it without their help. I got a big blessing, and I just want to thank John and Jerry for helping me rebuild my house, and I am very happy with his organization. God bless him, and hope he keeps doing a good job.
Ms. Carrasco, if I might ask you, remember when I first met you, and we tried? Can you tell us that little story?
Okay. I went outside to get my mail, it was February, very, very cold. And I saw Jerry across the street, and he was walking towards my house. So I thought, oh, my gosh, who's that man? So I go inside my house, and I close my front door.
She didn't want to open the door for me.
And when he knocked, I opened a little bit the screen door, and I thought, what do you want? And he looked at me, and he said, Ms. Carrasco, I noticed that your house needs a new roof. And I said, yes. And I thought, he's one of those men, you know, trying to get me to pay him to pay a roof. I said, yes, but I don't have any money, I'm, you know, I'm not working, and I live on a fixed income, so. And he said, well, if you give me a few minutes, very polite, very nice. If you give me a few minutes, I can explain to you that we might be able to help you. And I said, sure. And I thought, do I let him in? So finally, I opened my screen door, and I let him in. And sure enough, he explained to me. A couple of days later, you know, I applied, and he went by my house and said, you have qualified, which to me, it was a big blessing that God had seen me. So anyway, he kept in touch with me. Within three or four days, I started putting my roof, my new windows. My west side wall was, the chip rock was all broken. All of that was taken care of. So I want you all to know that there's still good people in Pecos like John Salcido and Jerry Miramontes. God bless you all.
Thank you very much. And Ms. Sulema Tercero, we are actually, at this time, finishing her.
Yes, I'm Sulema Tercero, and I'm like Ms. Rosa Carrasco. I didn't want to apply for the program, but finally, I made my decision, because I couldn't afford it actually by myself. I'm not working, you know, anymore, so my income is not that good. So I went ahead and made the application, and I got approved. So as soon as I did, they went and they started fixing my roof, because it was the main problem. And then the side of my back of my house, the wall was coming down, it came down. So and my windows, but I got it fixed, and they're working on it right now. And I'm very thankful for Mr. Salcido and Miramontes for helping me out. And they've been good, and the workers are very good persons. So I want to thank them again, and I am very blessed with what they helped me do.
Thank you so much for that comment. And so the people that I recognize around this room, I'm always asking for something. I'm not asking for myself, these are the people that I'm asking for. So I urge you to please support our program. We're local, these are voting citizens, and this is who we owe our loyalties to, people that really are elderly that need help. So I thank you so much for your time.
Any other public comments?
I have something to say. I want to applaud the leadership of our entities of this community. Because if you all haven't seen the suspension that happened in Pecos, and what we've been working for, working toward in the last year, year and a half, maybe two years. You know, it's a lot of talking, a lot of negotiations. But you know, finally, Tuesday, we got a promising announcement about Infineon. And it's not in the city, but it's out in the county. And it took the efforts of the leadership of the county, the EDC, the city, and I think the school board, the school, the hospital, and all of them working together to get the right people together and the right funding together, so that this company could come in and actually put together a big facility that they're building over there on Shore Road. And I worked out there, so I knew where it was going. So now that thing, that property is like twice as big as what it was when I was working out there a couple of years ago. But it's awesome for our community to be for a big company like this, because this is the biggest facility they're going to make. And I think there's only one or two of them. One, one, and it's in Corpus. This is a second one. And this company is coming in, there's going to be a lot of people coming in to do the construction. There's going to be a lot of people that are going to be hired when it's fully built. It would probably take about a year and a half to two years to get it done. But it's a plus for our community. It's something that all of us have talked about moving Pecos. You know, Pecos has been staying still for too long. You know, I left for 35 years, I come back, and Pecos is in worse shape than it was when I left. Because in the 70s and 80s, Pecos was nice. And today, it's getting nice again, because there's an effort by certain leaders. And one of the things that we had to do, we had to change the leadership. The administration had to change, because their thinking wasn't in the best interest of our community. And one thing this council is, is about our community. It's not about each and every one of us or what we want. It's about the community, it's what's good for this community. And some of those things, like the water park that's coming, it's good for the community. It may not be for us, because I'm too old to be out there in my speedo. But I tell you what, I got grandkids, and there's a lot of kids in this town. And there's new people coming into this town. And we need to welcome those new people that come into this town, because they're the ones bringing the new vision, the new energy. I had an opportunity to talk to a young lady that's graduating tomorrow. And that young lady has in her mind of coming back to Pecos. Because they're going to, that's what we need. We need our young folks to come back. Go get educated, but come back and bring your dream. Bring, make Pecos what it used to be, and even better than what it used to be, because it's already in its way. And no matter how many naysayers are out there, it's going to be done. Because we can't stop. The ball is rolling, and either join us and help us make it happen, because it's all for us. It's not for nobody else, but for the people, the citizens of Pecos County. Thank you.
Public comment for Francisco Manzunado, Chief. He brought up concern if we're monitoring the speed limits from, I guess, ranging from Starbucks to, let's say, La Fiesta. He's had a lot of concerns going out to the Cyclone, and he's saying that the A-2 vehicles are speeding a lot. And he's concerned about that area, if we're enforcing any traffic control. And this was Francisco Manzunado's public comment.
Any other public comments? We will close public comments. We go on to our consent agenda. Item E1, approve the minutes of the May 8th, 2025 regular City Council meeting. E2, review the expenditure report. E3, approve Resolution 25-05-05R, a resolution approving the submission of a Motor Vehicle Crime Prevention Authority Grant Program application to the 2025 SB 220 Catalytic Converter Grant Program. Can we get an explanation on E3?
Mayor, Council, Lisa Terrango, Chief of Police. So with this grant, it actually was just brought to our attention on Monday. The deadline is tomorrow to get all the data that's needed to go into it. So with that, I know we had discussed at the last council meeting about the murals, what we're going to do to kind of protect that. Some of this will encompass some cameras that we can have placed in areas like the Maxi Park Splash Pad, and then some other areas throughout the community. This grant is an 80/20, so it'll be 80% paid, and then the city will only be liable for the 20%. And talking with the company about what all they encompass as far as grant funding, this may even be able to fund some of our mobile data terminals that we plan to put into our patrol units this coming year. So what we have asked for initially was $192,000 to get that done. If this grant is approved, the city's portion of that, 192, will only be about $58,000. So it's a good grant, it's one that I've never applied for, so I'm going to try it, see where it goes. But it has double layers as far as different types of equipment that can be useful, not just for law enforcement, but for the city as well.
When are you supposed to know about the grant?
So they said probably by the end of July is when they send out notice on the approval part of it, so hopefully, we'll know something by then. I've never slapped a grant together in three days, but it's, the company was very helpful, you know, as far as what needs to go in. It's not a 25-page grant, it was a five-page one. And so you all know that I've applied for grants in the past, been very successful. This is probably one of the bigger ones, that the overall cost is about $580,000, of which the city's portion is going to be 20% of that. So it's going to be a win-win if we can get it to go through. With the camera system that we're looking to get, it ties into a nationwide camera system, if you will. And there's also parts of it where, let's say, a store or a business wants to purchase their own cameras that can go onto the system, although they won't be able to see the law enforcement cameras, law enforcement will be able to see theirs. And so it's leading to future stuff that our agency is moving towards technology-wise. And you'll see that during our budget meetings that are up and coming of what we're fixing to make a move on. Even though it's hard to hire police officer personnel or law enforcement, there's other ways to combat some of that through technology.
Charles, if it comes before the workshop for the budget for next year, do we have any funds to cover 10% of it?
Before the end of the year? I have to look. It's getting late in the year, so we want to be very judicious with everything that we're doing. I can look at it and see. But on some of this stuff, the budget process is starting to run with you all on the workshops, but within the month. I know Deander's working on the budget meeting this morning. But we can look at appropriating that if we have a cost gain, absolutely. I mean, we've been able, we've been blessed, we can find money, especially to help law enforcement.
So these funds, you have to use them within a certain time period?
It's a yearly one, yes, ma'am. And then from what they were saying, after you are approved, say for one year, you can just kind of continue to keep applying. And the way it sounds is this grant isn't utilized a lot, so they come back mid-year in a grant and say, do you want more? Would you like other stuff? And then they even go back a third time, because it's not utilized quite often. So it sounds like they have the amount of funds that they're able to be generous at times with some of their funding of these projects. This is part of like our capital improvement that we have for this next coming budget year. It's part of what we will be presenting. So if it can go from $192,000 that I asked for down to like 60, I think that's awesome. We try to be good stewards of taxpayer money when we're doing this kind of stuff. And so it's, I think it's going to be very beneficial for a lot of reasons. Where we strategically put up these cameras is going to be a big part of the operation. The Sheriff's Department already has some of these cameras themselves, as area law enforcement does as well. You know, the company is able to throw up a map and show you where all of these type of cameras are. And you probably hear about it in the news quite often of arrests that are being made when somebody passes through these locations. And they have what's called a hot list. And whenever the alarm goes off, everybody in the vicinity gets to see it. So it's going to be a good deal if we can make it work.
What else would encompass that grant in the future that you're looking at that would fall into those guidelines where it's acceptable for that grant?
So aside from equipment, they don't find any type of weaponry as far as tasers, that kind of stuff. But even down to the point where you could put in for patrol vehicles, which had I had a little more time to kind of get that together, that would have been great to know. And I have tomorrow till 5:00 PM to throw everything kind of at the kitchen sink in there. And so that's kind of what I'm doing, to see what else we can put in. Because I asked the same question, what else does this encompass? You know, I don't want to spin my wheels and apply for stuff that it doesn't cover. But there's other things as far as vehicles, different type of equipment, other cameras. If we see later on, hey, we want to add an additional five or 10 cameras, same thing, you can still add more to it as it goes yearly. And all they ask from us is a meeting quarterly. There's like a Zoom meeting where they see how the grant is being played out, see what your statistics are. Of course, with our record management system, easily, we're able to pull that type of data. They just want to see the utilization of what's being done. One big factor for us is the old field equipment that gets stolen out here in vehicles. Copper wiring is a big thing. So these are all things that I've put in as part of our explanation of the need of some of this stuff. And Mr. Arona can probably attest to TNP yards, you know, when they've gotten hit a few times, you know. If it wasn't for some of the cameras and extra security, some of those would have gone unsolved. But we've been able to have cameras at some of these locations. We've been as innovative as we find deer cameras that we can purchase for a small price. And we've been doing that, we've done that for city parks, we've done that for some locations that get hit constantly. It may take a few days to solve some of it, but we eventually get, you know, some of the images that we need.
Can I, what, page 25, and the WWPT, is that the water lab?
No, that's wastewater treatment plant. That's the ones that are going on. At our last meeting, I said, probably when I have the grand opening for that, I'm not going to get very good turnout.
Ms. Lott, or there's a couple expenditures to cover, you're an expert. Have you been having some regrets, or?
We have, we have. And one of them, and I knew that you all probably asked on that, the first one that's on there, the bigger one, that one is going to go for an insurance claim. The other one is lower, are deductible, so it will not go on the insurance. And both of those, one is from the jail, one is PD. And the volume, the number of miles that they're on the street, we have to minimize what we do, but there will be accidents. And they're not that frequent, so it's really, I think it's pretty controlled.
You said these vehicle incidents were with the jail and the PD, you said?
One was with PD, and one with jail, yes, sir.
Any more questions?
May I make a motion, we have two potential candidates present. I'll break them.
You got it. You got it? I have a motion from Councilman Arona, a second from Councilman Graham to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. We'll go on to our non-consent agenda. Item F1, presentation of the Key Pecos Pride Trophy to Permian Resources Team for the 2025 Spring Biannual Community Cleanup. Goal five, promote open and consistent communications. In late April, the Town of Pecos City hosted the 2025 Spring Biannual Community Cleanup. For those who may not be familiar, we hold this event twice a year, once in the spring and once in the fall. During the cleanup, individuals, families, organizations, and companies come together for four hours on Saturday to pick up trash around town. It's a simple but powerful way to support our community and keep Pecos clean and beautiful. This spring's event was one of our biggest yet, with over 50 participants and a total of 9.27 tons of trash picked up in just one morning. We're so proud of everyone who showed... of friendly competition. Each time, we award the Key Pecos Pride Trophy to the individual, family, company, or organization that collects the most trash. And now I'd like to recognize this spring's trophy winner, Permian Resources. Permian Resources went above and beyond during this cleanup and we're proud to honor their contribution. I'd like to invite their representatives to come up front, be recognized, and take a photo with us. Thank you again to everyone who participated, and we hope to see even more of you at our fall cleanup coming this October. Let's continue to keep Pecos proud.
If I could have all of you guys just come in front of the tables, please?
Welcome.
Take the picture. I can't turn it around. I'll let you help it out.
I'm not going to keep that.
I get to keep it for you later.
Okay. I can have you guys just squeeze in just a little bit more?
Thank you.
One, two, three. Thank you.
We're going to go on to item F2. Discuss, consider appointment of one, of to fill one, unexpired PEDC Board Director position to be effective through September 30th, 2025. This is under strictly the goal five, promote open and consistent communication. Jimmy Dutton, PEDC Executive Director.
Mayor, Council, thank you for having me back. A couple of months ago, I shared the letter of the resignation of John Parent, who was, who moved into the role of the tourism for the Chamber of Commerce. With that being said, and following the directives of the board or the council last year, the individuals who were not selected, we reached out and let them know that keep their chin up, if there was an opening, we would reach out and advertise and let them know. That being said, you have two candidates in front of you, one that was not selected last time but asked that her name be put back on. And then the other one, Alfredo Soldania, former council member. So I reached out to Jenny, Jenny said she would love to serve if the opportunity arose. We're not as good as the council anymore because the council and the ex-official members make it 100% of the time to the meeting. We have a couple that have missed one meeting this year. So I applaud you guys, I was just like, oh my gosh, you all are beating us. But with that being said, and I know we got two great candidates, but we need to try and continue to keep some balance on the council or on the EDC board. So with that, I would make the recommendation that y'all consider appointing Ms. Barnmore, local businesswoman. She owns a business with her husband, and she's excited if chosen. Not that Mr. Soldania isn't, but at the end of the day, you know, I got to have some balance, and that's all that I'm asking of the council.
Make a motion to approve your recognition.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Councilwoman.
I have a motion from Councilman Graham, a second from Councilwoman Trugillo, to approve Jenny Barnmore to be on the EDC board. All those in favor, say aye. Any opposed?
I abstain.
Councilman Soldania has finished the abstain, but the motion carries.
And Mayor, with your permission, I'll reach out to both of them to let them know, and I'll ask Mr. Soldania if the opportunity arises again next, in August, please resubmit his name. Okay? All right, thank you.
Item F3, discuss, consider entering into a tax abatement agreement with Aperion Pecos Power Plant LLC, where the plant is located on the Polver Road and County Road 118, Charles Lino City Manager.
Mayor and Council, Charles Lino, City Manager. This is one that we initially approved back in February. There were some issues with the state funding, is what I understand, with the Texas Energy Fund, and they requested some modifications, and that's the reason that it's coming back. The one thing that I do have to let you know is, I got this today. I shared with you a hard copy, the one that's in your packet is not going to be accurate. So you do have hard copies of this. We do have two representatives, Lyndon Nance and Ed, Edward, from Mercuria and Aperion. And I'm going to ask them to come up and try to explain and give you all some information or allow you all to ask questions about it before we take any action on it.
Edmund?
Good afternoon. Edward Torres from Pecos Power Plant, Big Rabbit.
Lyndon Nance, Permian Energy Group. Would you all like us to do a quick recap and up to date of where we're at now for, I believe you're the new councilman?
Do you have a new councilman?
Yes, ma'am. So we intend to build a 250-megawatt natural gas-fired power plant on the south side of town, right off Tolliver, at Tolliver and 118. It would help stabilize the power grid for this region, and then the excess power would be being pushed into ERCOT. And we've agreed to build the 30 houses to benefit the community itself, plus our employees that need to be in the area as well for the quick response times. It would be a five-minute start power plant, so it wouldn't be running continuously, it would only essentially be a backup generation site for the grid. We'd be working with solar and wind, so as wind or solar declines, our plant would come on and fill that gap. It should help stabilize power prices and the demand in the local area as well. And we anticipate 18 full-time employees being hired and staying in the area once the plant's fully built. And then during construction, it should be around 300 employees at the peak. So, and we anticipate the construction to last about two years roughly. Our goal is have it operational by the third quarter of 2027.
First, second quarter of 2027. Correct. So maybe expanding a little on that one. This is a project, first of all, thank you very much for the leadership. This is a project that made it to the Texas Energy Fund. It's an important project for the whole Texas grid and the ERCOT market, and of course, we see as a pretty good project for to provide capability and reliability to the grid as we see more renewables doing penetration to the grid. So this is a project that stabilizes the grid, and that's what the, it's been selected by Texas Energy Fund. We are progressing very fast with the Texas Energy Fund in the, what they call the due diligence process. Equipment's already purchased, the main equipment's already purchased, we already purchased the transformers, which is also important, and we, last week, we selected the, we assigned the, what we call the notice to proceed to the EPC company, so they're already doing the detail engineering work. We are in pretty good track to start breaking ground September, October of this year, if we can get that Texas Energy Fund lineup before that. That's kind of where we are going. So right now, where we are, and probably very important news for this project this week, we met with TMP, and we're now ready to sign an interconnection agreement with TMP, which is very supportive and excited about this project because it brings all the stability to the region and it provides, especially as they see a lot of growth from what they call the load for the region and the area, so this project will definitely provide some stability to their system. Very excited about this project, and we really appreciate your consideration and your support.
On the contract itself, I know it's been a process. We were working on it late into the night, last night, and it's, we've been working very closely with Mr. Dutch over here and going in circles between the PDC and then the finance side, trying to make everybody happy, and it's been a challenge. But I believe we have a very good contract established now where everybody's bought into it, and I believe everybody's happy with it. It's essentially, we'll build a minimum of 30 homes. They can go over, but the goal is 60,000 square feet of livable space built inside the city limits. So if it takes them 35 homes to hit that 60,000 square feet, then we build 35 homes. And then if it's not hit to that size, then there's a $6 million penalty. But it's based upon, prorated for the number of homes that aren't built, so.
You said you lost said from wind and solar drops down.
Yes, sir.
Our closest solar plant is in, or farm is in Cuyahoga Sound. I don't really know how big it is or what the megawatts are. Our nearest wind farms are about 90, 100 miles.
Correct.
You're not, not that aware of that.
I believe there's a very large one down by Fort Stockton as well.
Yeah, and you got one in eastern of 820.
Yes, sir.
Would that affect, are you monitoring those? When those go down, you start up?
ERCOT does. That's what they do. They use this power as a backup to when the sun is not there or the wind is not there or there's, in the fall, when we see a lot of wind or lack of wind. So that's what these ERCOT do. We provide power so they can monitor and supply that energy when it's needed. So this plan is designed to be up and running in less than five minutes, and so allows to pretty much do that.
Do you all store gas out there?
No, sir. We buy it straight off the pipeline coming out of the lines there.
One of the things that we consider when we were selecting the site, it's the abundance of gas that we, and options that we have for natural gas here, and it's a very good place for natural gas. It allows you to burn gases with this equipment very efficient, and that's, there's multiple sources for natural gas, fortunately, in this area.
The main goal is the quick start response time, so from five minutes, we can go from having no power on the grid up to 250 megawatts being pushed on the grid.
Do y'all have another estimate, how much you will be producing with?
So from the, from the study that was done before we began the construction, they studied the previous three years of operations, and they said in those three years, they would have run nine months out of the year, based on the demand for the area, so. Yes, sir. Very high demand, very good, very good project.
We, in the long term, we're seeing, especially the peak summer, the summer is a peak, where the plan is definitely going to be running all the time, and then obviously November, December, January, that's where we see the majority of the activity. Right now, in the economic models, we're seeing probably about half of the, of the plan, only because it's Excel, and Excel supports everything, but reality is that we think that this is going to be running more because the load and the demand of the region. When, that's what we've been communicating by ERCOT and TMP, that they see the amount of growth in the region, and they just need more plans like this.
We're not in a position to invest quite a large amount of money for western area.
Correct.
I've seen a lot, I've worked in the, I've seen a lot of growth in the last 15 years, addressing the holes, water, size of water, size of holes, and then we're fixing to swap again to class, holes, and just continue on with that.
Yes, sir. TMP has been great, supportive, and thanks to TMP, that's where probably we are within the connection. ERCOT takes a little bit longer, quite honestly. TMP was able to provide the studies in time for us to now go ahead and sign an interconnection agreement with ERCOT, and we just met two days ago precisely to talk about, because they see, there's a lot of investment coming from some of the Encore and AP lines that are all connected, as we're talking about different plans in the area, and they're talking about that, like what these kind of plans are, and they're saying, can you make it bigger? So we're working on it to see if we can make it bigger.
So once the, once we, the agreement comes together and all that, what kind of timeframe, when would you start construction?
We, obviously, it all depends on the Texas Energy Fund, but we are planning September, October of this year. September, hopefully September. We'd like to start in September, and so that way we can have a lot of people doing construction and have the foundations done by probably, let's say, Q2 of next year. So we'll see, but September, October is when our timeframe.
Part of their commitment to the community is on the housing side, because that's one of the biggest issues we've heard from all the different entities in the community, is that they want guarantees on the housing, and so they've gone ahead and bought 12 lots already off of Jackson Street as their commitment to the community before, before any abatement treaty been approved or anything along those lines. So they're 100% on board with everything.
Correct.
So where your distribution line, so you make the electric, where does it go back?
This is going to go, it's called, they're going to build a new substation on site. It's going to call Mosquito Lake, and that's going to go through a new 138 KB to Calpen. So it's going to go from there, from the location, 138. I think they want to build another 138, parallel to that, since they want to see more growth in the area, and from there, they distribute between, TMP distributes between the different substations. But generally, it's a 138, but it goes to 138, which is transformation.
Just back to that for the transformers?
Currently, currently the lines can support the 250 without the, without the Calpen jumper, but that pushes all the power through the middle of town. But once the jumper's built, that'll allow for the expansion on site. So we have enough room on that land right now for two plants to be built.
Correct.
Okay, and since this is about abatement, can y'all explain what abatement, or what?
We're asking for a, essentially a payment in lieu of taxes. We would pay $75,000 a year to the city, and then we would build a minimum of 30 homes and a minimum of 60,000 square feet. And we're asking for 100% abatement for 10 years in return for that, along with the $300,000 plant. And the abatement would only affect the plant itself.
And that would amount to, and the, get that all together, it's how much is a 100% abatement?
About 65%.
About 65%, right?
We differ, we were off maybe a quarter of a point between the Tribune's numbers and mine on the economic impact. If the council chooses to move forward, the one thing I would make sure and instruct Mr. Lino to address is that it would not, the abatement would not start until the first full year of completion and operation. And the purpose for it is, remember, it is inside your TIRZ, that zone out there. So if you start it right away, you lose the money, you know, and it all goes back into, into theirs, which is the first year. So we wanted to, we want them to pay the first full year of taxes after completion and operation, and then after that, they would follow the 10 years.
Mayor, unless Cyra corrects me, I think we have to have some time for public comment if anybody has anything, or do we have to on this?
Did you already open the public hearing?
We did not.
No, we, yes, did, about these three minutes.
We have to have, open a public hearing for three minutes, Mayor, if we could.
We'll open a public hearing at this time, and it is 6:16 PM.
Thank y'all for your time today. Thank you very much.
I don't know if the council has seen the latest draft of contract. The one that was attached is not the one, the last version of it.
Yeah, we were just giving this, this is the best, everybody has to just go.
Is this the, is this the agreement?
The new one, yes.
This is okay, and we just got this.
There's, I mean, the number, the volume that's in here changed significantly, and part of it was requirements that the Texas Energy Fund put on them in order to get that money in there. They also, there's a big formula in there that, I did check the math, and the math works out okay, but it is, it is, it is a requirement that they, that the Texas Energy Fund asked that there be some type of a pro rata share. I can tell you that, I ask a question because I said, okay, well, what's this? I asked Parker, I asked Bobby, I asked Jimmy. I said, how come we have an agreement in here that's talking about the EDC inside of a Town of Pecos City abatement? That is going to be incorporated into every entity, and what that relates to is...
We did not.
No. Yes, it, about these three minutes.
We have to have, open a public hearing for three minutes, Mayor, if we could.
We'll open a public hearing at this time, and it is sixteen PM.
Thank you all for your time today.
Thank you very much.
I don't know if the council has seen the latest draft of contract. The one that was attached is not the one, the last version of it.
Yeah, we were just giving this, 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 this.
Everybody has to just go.
Is this the, is this the agreement?
The new one, yes.
This is okay. And we just got this.
There's, I mean, the number, the volume that's in here changed significantly, and part of it was requirements that the Texas Energy Fund put on them in order to get that money in there. They also, there's a big formula in there that, I did check the math, and the math works out okay, but it is, it is, it is a requirement that they, that the Texas Energy Fund asked that there be some type of a prorate of share. I can tell you that, I ask a question because I said, okay, well, what's this? I asked Parker, I asked Bobby, I asked Jimmy. I said, how come we have an agreement in here that's talking about the EDC inside of a town of Pecos City abatement? That is going to be incorporated into every entity, and what that relates to is if they fail to build the houses over there on Jackson Street, EDC can buy it back at the same amount that they sold it for. That's where that six hundred thousand comes into play. So I had those questions when I started looking at it and started trying to bird dog it and find out what it was about. I did have conversations with, a little, a few with Parker. I had a few conversations with Bobby Malalado on it, and it's been a busy day. So I didn't see anything that materially changed from the last time that we did it, but...
May we explain the basis for the formula, how we came to that?
Let's wait till the public hearing.
At all his words, I did review the contract. I spoke with Charles about, I think, one correction we need, and double checking it, and y'all were asking about the timing of it, I think there may be one other correction of the timing of it. They anticipate beginning construction within six months and completing within twenty-four months. It says that if it's not substantially completed by that time for reasons outside of the owner's control, then the agreement terminates. It doesn't address if it's not completed for reasons within the owner's control. So I'd probably with that. And then paragraph six point one, reviving assignment of the contract, I think it was meant to say with the consent of the city, because the subsequent two paragraphs reference the city's consent, but six point one says it can be assigned without the city's consent. So those two are the only revisions I would ask, and then the addresses to be filled in on the notices section and article eight, but that's another difference.
So if it's terminated, we go back, it's a state that's fall through, they're going to pay back-to-back taxes, plus interest?
As is, well, they wouldn't be giving anything back until it's complete. So the termination, there's no reason.
They're not receiving any benefit from the abatement until a year after they're operational for a year. So they have to become and be operational in order for them to do that. Yes, sir. That's where we have a little failsafe in there from my standpoint.
Abatement and no one gets any benefit, it's like it never happened, if it's not completed within two years, although, as stated, it's only for reasons outside of their control. Like I said, I would just be with or without that control, but that's the question.
So I'm confused on this pilot and the hundred percent. A hundred percent abatement would be on the plant itself.
It would be on...
And seventy-five thousand would be on the houses.
No. What, what it means is, when we're talking, whenever I'm putting it together and saying, in essence, the houses and the seventy-five thousand dollars are pilot money. So when you look at the full value of thirty houses, just, and we came up with, I think, six million dollars is what it was, plus the seventy-five thousand per year for ten years, that's another seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If you factor that into the total amount of property taxes that we would be abating, that takes it from being a hundred percent down to sixty-four percent, or sixty-three point something percent. So it, that is all, without calling it pilot, we get seventy-five thousand dollars in pilot, but the houses are also pilot money. This is a complex one. It really is. It's complex.
It's one of a kind, I must say.
It's not actually them getting a hundred percent type of abatement.
No.
Sixty-five percent.
Correct.
Ten years is legally over.
It is.
And I think it's important to be clear for the public and for anybody that may come back and ask, or that is confused, because it is a complex situation. I think we need to be clear so that people understand that we're not giving, I don't know, I don't know how to word it properly. I don't want to confuse anybody, because I know I've had, people have reached out to me and asked, like, why does the city feel that they need to give the abatements for developers or anything? So can you kind of clarify it a little bit, just so that people understand?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, economic, I mean, yeah, abatements were built into the code to try to incentivize businesses to come into different localities. And there's a lot of these companies that, they will shop around. They do. And there's a lot of time that you have to really leverage. We don't want all of the businesses coming in and doing a hundred percent abatement without some type of a pilot, unless it's something that we've been trying to get for a long time, and it's like a huge cherry on top. Then we have a conversation with y'all and say, you know what, this is the amount of sales tax revenue we're going to bring in off of this facility, and it may be extensive. Sometimes that will offset some, the ability to give a hundred percent abatement. I've told the council, I said, a lot of times, we don't have to give a hundred percent, we can give less. In this case, even though the documents themselves will say that there's a hundred percent abatement of the property taxes, there's payment, and the payment in lieu of taxes that's going to come into play that nets that down to sixty-four percent over ten years. These type of plants are going to build in communities, especially out here in West Texas. And I think the number of jobs they're going to bring in, the stability to the region, utilizing some of our waste product that we have, is a great way to get that done. So I'm excited, and in our conversations with, with this group, there's a very good chance that once we get this one done, that they'll build one or two, three, four, five, six more plants in our community. That's jobs, that's, that's equipment, and yeah, if we give some similar abatement, or we give less, they're still going to be here, because we have to be business friendly to a certain extent. Not too friendly. We got to make sure the city's taken care of. We got to make sure our taxpayers are taken care of. But this is a way to get something in here. These should be high-paying jobs, they have to be local. So that's where we see that it could benefit the community. I know that they're talking about, they're interested in partnering with a school about some of their CTE programs that could maybe be utilized to doing some of this stuff out there, and it may just create, we may be able to create a pipeline to where we can keep some of our local students local, and give them some jobs that, that they can make a career out of. Always a risk. Any, any abatement is always a risk. If somebody tells you there's no risk, they're lying to you. But I think this is a good utilization of chapter three twelve and an abatement. It's a three hundred million dollar plant, and when we, when we talked, we all started out, and initially, we thought it was going to be two twenty-five to two hundred and thirty. Now it's up to almost three hundred million. I think it's two ninety-something right now. So if they can build three or four, three hundred million dollar plants in town, it's going to, for our citizens long term, they're going to get some benefit from it.
I think it would give the community that stability of not depending a hundred percent on the oil and gas, which I'm not saying I'm against oil and gas, I'm not, I, it's thriving, it keeps our economy going, but this secures our community to have a diversity, stability in our, in our towns.
Yeah, and, and I mean...
Our schools.
Yes, ma'am. And the chatter out there is, we're looking at other, you know, some of the technology that's out there that's going into places across the state, across the country, that are looking at our area, and if we can get some of those in there, we just build some synergies to where if oil and gas slows down, the city's still thriving. If it's going good, we're doing even better. And some of these groups are wanting to use some of the waste products, so that's where it turns it into something mutually beneficial for the environment as well as our community.
That's one thing, that's one, one way to, to grow a community is to, to have jobs. People are looking for jobs. People will come to a community that has jobs. People will come to a community that has parks, that has the quality of life that changes, and like Councilwoman Trufield, Councilwoman Trufield said, you know, that diversity, because yeah, we can depend on gas, but one thing that we have here in, in Texas, especially in this area of East County, is gas and land. And if we got it, we need to take advantage of all this while, while it's out there, because, you know, we missed, we dropped the ball many times in the last few years, two thousand and seven, when, when Chesapeake came in drilling, drilling and drilling, they dropped the ball. Now Chesapeake's not around, but the facilities still are.
Yeah.
And there's more coming, and with this new technology, and then with, with the way our, look at what's happening to Pecos, the modernization of Pecos, you know, especially the south side right now, you know. That's looking good, our schools, I mean, there's nothing like that happening anywhere else. And people are asking, you know, Odessa's trying to compete with us now, you know, we built a, a baseball complex, now they're building one bigger. I mean, they got more people than we do, so, but, we're in the middle of nothing. And we're sitting in the hub of, of oil country, gas country, you know, and if we don't take advantage of, then we're not smart. Because I've worked, I've worked forty-two years, forty-one years in the oil field, and it, and I saw the ups and downs, and those companies are getting smarter and smarter, they don't lay off anybody, because all they have, just move on to a different situation, here we go. And so we got an opportunity, and we need to jump on that opportunity. But it takes leadership, like I said earlier in the opening deal. It's the leadership that pushes it. And what it'll also bring, with companies coming in, it brings new businesses into town. Business, we don't have to go to Odessa or Midland to El Paso to go enjoy it, when we can have it here. It'll take some time, but we'll have it here.
It's not fast enough, Councilman.
Not fast enough, it'll be, be nice, but...
Yes, sir.
Is there a clause in here about if they, if they sell it to Chevron, or sell it to somebody, is there something in there about that?
If they, if they resell it, they have to, in order for assignment or anything, Randy, they have to come through us, they have to get our approval. So there's, there is that clause in there, that's where there's one of the, there's that typo that says, that Parker was talking about a few minutes ago, that says without, that should say with, because it is with, it's, it's direct, that they have to go through the entity. So they, they have, they have a hook in there, there's, there's a hook in that game to where they don't get to just say, okay, we're in here for two years, then we're going to, we're going to offload it and throw our trash on to somebody else. That's not going to, that's not going to happen. They're locked in with this agreement that way.
Is there something in there, can you sell it to a nonprofit?
I do not think there's anything in there that...
I'd like to see something. Sure. We keep our evaluation?
Yes, sir. Oh, we, we do, absolutely. Well, there's not, I mean, there's not a lot of basis where you can do anything, there's not a lot of programs where you can purchase something that way as a nonprofit. There, there's select statute that'll allow that, and there's nothing that I know of right now in the code that would allow that to happen on an industrial, on an industrial plant. I don't see that happening. Now, legislature could change that at any time, if that could happen two years down the road. There's nothing in, that they're talking about now that relates to that, but not to say that it couldn't happen. I know that, Mayor, can we close public comment, maybe? Okay.
So we can pause the public hearing, it's thirty minutes.
And then Lyndon wanted to give you all a little information on, on the formula and how they came up with it.
Yes, I believe the version y'all have right now has a, a table in it showing all the different entities, so we were getting a lot of different pushback from, we were trying to essentially make one document that all the different taxing, that was probably a bad approach from our side. But, so we, we came up with a formula where we took out the table altogether, so there wouldn't be that, that confrontation between each different taxing group saying, why, why are they getting more money than we are? So the, the goal with the, with switching to the formula side is to make it where essentially the, if, if one taxing entity says, okay, we're going to give a hundred percent, and the other one says, well, we only want to do fifty percent, then if, and this is all if the homes aren't built, but we fully intend to build all, all thirty homes. So when it, when it comes to the six million dollar penalty, if, if there's any money there of, of homes that weren't built, then, then it basically rules how the, the funds would be split up amongst the different taxing entities based upon y'all's participation in the tax abatements. So if, if y'all give a hundred percent, somebody else gives fifty percent, y'all would get more money based, because y'all, y'all are investing more upfront into the project itself versus a different taxing entity that, that might only give a lower amount.
What page is that table on?
Ninety?
Yes, I believe so.
The table is going to be in the one in your computer, Randy? And the new one, that is a new one with a formula in it. The one Lyndon's referring to is the one that we had in the computer, the one with the table was, is, I gave them copies of the new ones, they have our copies of the new ones. So the tables were in their, in their, in their, should have been on their tables.
The, the formula basically does a double proration. For the thirty homes, it prorates out, you know, if we built twenty homes, then, then it would be the penalty, the six million dollars, it would be a two million dollar penalty, because we only, we were lacking ten homes. And then that, that two million dollar would be prorated out to the different taxing entities based upon, upon y'all's proration, so, or y'all, y'all's participation. It just, it, it was an attempt to make it cleaner and not have fights amongst the different taxing entities.
Who does the county do?
The county is next month on the twenty-third, I believe. We can't move forward with any other taxing entities without the city's approval. The city has to go first due to statute.
I'll make the motion that we enter, into, or give our city manager authorization to enter into a tax abatement agreement with Apurian Pecos Power Plant LLC for the plant to be located on fellow road, at County Road one eighteen.
Second. Second. We have a motion from Councilman Saldana, a second from Councilman Carrasco, to approve entering into a tax abatement agreement with Apurian Pecos Power Plant LLC. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? As the record shows, the motion carries. Okay, we're going to skip to item F-13, discuss, consider ordinance twenty-five dash oh five dash oh one, rescinding ordinance twenty-three dash oh six dash oh one, ROB, strategic goal two, state and city, first reading, Arthur.
May I come up? Thank you all.
I just want to make sure that the morals, that the, that the people are going to be kept up.
It's a wrong one, Art.
Okay.
We skip.
I'm sorry. I was kidding.
Good luck to guys.
Okay, yeah, third time, okay.
Can I sit up front? Can you guys hear for that? People in the back, would you like to sit up front? Can y'all hear us okay?
Okay, as we started this a year ago, and it was chanted by a bunch of people that have ROBs, I don't know what you call them, I'm just going to call them side by sides. And I was bored, I know the chief brought up some good, strong points back then, and then as, where I live, I see a lot of kids in, I'll call them oversized golf carts. There's too many people out there now, right, that are not, in my estimation, what I asked leaving, taking advantage of others that wanted it to be done. They expressed interest in this, and expressed self-policing, but that didn't go on very long. And now, just a couple, a month or so ago, there's a death in Monahans, of a young lady, a teenager. And I see teenagers, young kids, driving these vehicles, and was very concerned in the line, to me. We said, you know, you can drive across state highways, but you got to stay within the thirty mile an hour, thirty-five mile an hour streets, which I know doesn't give you guys a lot of traveling, you know? But it got out of hand, you know? And we left ourselves an out, that if this was not followed, that way we give it's intended to be, for your enjoyment, for the enjoyment of those that have it. If it was not followed, we would, we'd be back. If, if it was not followed, we, we get back. So, that's what we have.
I'd like to touch up on that. Last week was my first council meeting, so I was kinda getting accustomed to all that's been going on. Chief, is your staff educated on the ROV ordinance, and if so, did they sign off stating that they've read and understood the ordinance?
They are educated on the ordinance. As far as signing off on it, no, that's just part of, they are educated on it.
Okay. Uh, what I've seen on these violations, talking about Councilor Arona, some of these violations are common sense, such as, you know, you have to be twenty-one years old enough to drive these things, reckless driving, a person on the lap that's five years old, and so forth. I've been on that side of the fence once, and I'm gonna make a quick story really quick, but I have a place out in Balmory, and they had allowed jet skis to go out there, and I spent about thirty thousand dollars on jet skis. And six months later, they changed the rules, and now I'm stuck with thirty thousand dollars worth of jet skis. This moment, I look at it this way, we have a total of thirty-three active permits in this community, and these things range about forty-five thousand dollars, not including upgrades. So that's a one point five million dollar investment that the community has made in certain people that are following the rules. And, uh, at the end of the day, to me being on that side of the fence, it's gonna hurt when you have to sell that thing for half the value of the fire sale. And with that being said and done, I think we should have like a, what's called a public town hall meeting? Town hall meeting, because one bad apple is gonna ruin it for the rest, and you guys voted us in to represent the community. And where I stand on this is, I don't think everyone should be punished for one bad apple. We could probably make an amendment to change the ordinance, if you're caught with a violation, to revoke your permit for a year, to mean that we mean business, but at the end of the day, I can feel your pain, because you've, you've spent up to sixty thousand dollars on these things, and now they're just gonna be parked collecting dust and cutaways. So that's where I stand on that.
Well, I have coworkers who stopped and terminated. One was here, but he, they traveled to El Paso, didn't they, so, and I have thirty, forty, fifty, sixty people in the group that do these runs, I guess you call them, runt us. I'm sorry, we don't have that place here. How many of you have your vehicles registered? But there's still more out there that aren't. There's still a lot of them that I see, we have kids driving. The parents are not being responsible. What do I, how do I know?
So are we being punished for them?
I've called the chief, I've called the police department, I see you want it up, they're legal, but by the time the police officer, the one from further out, they're gone.
We don't mind being pulled over and checked for all of our stuff to be legal, we're here because we are legal. We've spent thirty-five hundred dollars, up to four thousand dollars in upgrades to our machines to make sure that we comply with y'all's stuff, so, that's gonna be just a loss for everybody, because at the end of the day, if you take it away from us, those same people that aren't following the rules now, they're not gonna follow them.
State your name, please. State your name. For the record.
Yeah, one of the things that, that we talked about last year when we talked about this, and the, the group, I, I don't think none of you guys were on that, those, that, those particular groups, but we had a town hall, and they, uh, the way we laid it out is, you police yourselves, you know, and, and, and it's hard to do when, when we, you know, because nobody else is doing it. So there was a, a trial run, to see how it's gonna work. But when I see ten-year-olds driving, when the law says, driver license, uh, you have to go to the police department to get your sticker and all that, and I know some of you all, and I can feel for you, uh, because man, you make a fifty thousand dollar investment and then, but don't follow the law, the law's gonna spank anybody. And, uh, I, I don't have one, and I wouldn't have one, because I'd, I'd be probably, uh, I'd miss, miss it somewhere. But you know, to have something like this, something like that, and, and, and I was for it back then, and, and today, I mean, I'm, it's not that I'm not for it, because what, what I've always said, in, in my, in my opinion is, this community is about togetherness, it's about coming together and helping each other out, that's the only way we can make it work. A, any, anything we do, any kind of ordinance that, that we write, we write the ordinance, but then we have police officers that have to, to, uh, you know, exercise those ordinance, we have code enforcement officers that come out to do that, but all the ordinance are, are there is to protect each and every one of us. If, when, you know, if I was making a fifty thousand dollar investment, sixty thousand dollar investment, I'd make sure that I'm driving, not nobody else, because according to the ordinance, the, the name on that, on, on that permit is you, and you're the driver, not your kid, not your wife, nobody, it's you. And when, that's not being honored, you know, what, what's that to tell us, well, if, if we give it a second chance, uh, then we're gonna be here in a year again, or in six months, because something, you know, something went, went haywire. So, you know, our, our officers are, they already have a lot to do with all this traffic, and, but to be looking out for, for, uh, young, young people, young kids, driving those big monsters, it's, it's, it's something else. And, you know, motorcycles are allowed, but those people, they went higher than us, they went national to get what they wanted, and that's why there's motorcycles, I think the RVs are more safe than the motorcycle, in my opinion. But, uh, so, in, in my standing, I mean, whatever the council wants to do, I'm, I'm, I'm sitting in the middle because I agreed the first time to it. I, I wanted to give it a chance, and, but I got kinda disappointed seeing kids, because it, it's just not, it's not right, I, I'd hate to see somebody get hurt.
Most of the licenses are not here with us.
How many licenses have y'all issued with kids driving these?
So we issued, we've had thirty different traffic stops, nine of those are currently in municipal court at this time. As far as the age, I don't have, like, you know, it's a juvenile or it's not. I think what the gentleman says, it's, it's very apparent, the ones who are gonna follow the rules, they're the ones that are here following the rules, you're still gonna have those that are not gonna do it. You know, the police department doesn't go either way, we gotta enforce the ordinance, or we gotta enforce the state law whenever this thing is over and done, whatever you decide. Um, you're still gonna have those that are gonna violate the law, no matter what it is, whether it's an ordinance or it's a state law. Um, I, as far as juveniles, I don't have the list that will show them the juvenile names, but...
Because I see kids, you know, when I was twelve, I was driving all around San Antonio, and so I know kids are still doing that, regular cars, motorcycles, and stuff, so, uh, we're not doing, we're not threatening to take them off the streets, you know, so, I, I just still, I still can't get my hands around it. What's the difference, you know? Why are we picking on this group instead of the other groups too? Would kids violate that too? You know, and they have accidents too, in the cars and the motorcycles.
They do.
It's like, it's like the RVs or off-road.
Sure, and they would get citations and/or parents issued citations for a minor driving a motor vehicle, which would be a car and motorcycle, if they're allowed by a parent or a guardian or owner of the vehicle to drive that vehicle, then the guardian and the parent gets a citation as well, that's the difference there. And, to Mr. Carrasco's, if there's more than one violation that's already in our ordinance on this, if there's at least two or more, council and/or the judge has the, the ability to go forward and, and say like, hey, we wanna rescind this person's permit to operate under ROV. So that language is already in there, it is at the discretion of, of council and municipal board.
That's up to three, correct?
At least two violations on the third, you know, it's the choices.
Before we get to that point where we're saying, hey, we're done with this, we give them one chance, and one, you mess it up, you're suspended for a whole year, the permit's gone. And that's something that maybe, off subject, that if you guys were to create a group to also be on the lookout for safety, or promote safety within your groups, that would help, to create safety awareness, and, uh, you're part of the group that would also contribute, but that's kinda where I stand, I mean, I know what it's like, buying a, a really expensive product, and then all of a sudden, somebody comes and says, hey, you can't do that, that's...
That was discussed, right? You know, the guys that were here adamant about this, you know, one, we'll police ourselves, we'll take care of ourselves, you know, we'll help the guys.
But I'd say I think this is a different group now.
Yeah, I know, I understand, I understand, but I want you to understand where I'm coming from.
Okay. Yeah, but if, once you take our privilege away, we're gonna stop writing ours, but those that were violating, violating it, they're still gonna continue doing it.
They're still gonna be violating. So, the plaque that, that's issued, it's in the windshield, right, in the front? How big is it? I, I find it hard to see.
It's like four by four, maybe?
Four by six, probably.
Mr. Font and Captain, what? He stated, it's hard to see it from the front, because you're following from behind.
We also have license plates in the way.
And that's the other thing, that's, a lot of the ones that I've seen, they're killing, and I call them in, but you get, they get lost, you know? They're, they're booking it down the highway, they don't have a license plate.
And those would be the same ones that are considering doing it after?
I was talking to a captain of this four seater lines, he said the state requires y'all to have license plates.
Yes, correct.
Okay, so y'all, y'all have license plates on there?
Yes, sir.
License plates and insurance?
Everything, yes, sir, fully there. The ones that are doing it legal, yes, they do.
The what plates?
The ones that are doing it legal, like what they're saying, they get their license plate, they get their insurance, they bring their vehicle to the PD and do the inspection.
They'll get inspected too.
So, out of all the, the ones that are registered, everybody's up to date on their registration, all of them?
No.
So how many do we have, uh, registered?
Right now, there's thirty-three registered, twelve of those are out of compliance, whether they've been sold, whether they're in the shop, and, because permits is kinda dancing calling to see where are those twelve that are not coming in. Some of them are waiting to see what's gonna happen with this meeting, before they come in. Every January, it starts again, where they have to have their inspection done and the permit issued.
So just like they, just like, uh, and this may be extreme, but if we were to keep it...
Two, you can only register it the first time.
I would think, I would think would be, you know, if, if, when they get a violation, do they get the ticket? Is it a fine, or is this just a spanking of, you know, slap in the hand?
It goes to municipal court, and they deal with the municipal judge on it, I think the fine can go up to two fifty.
I think it's between two fifty and five hundred?
Yes.
But I haven't had any that have been contested, or, no one's pled not guilty, I didn't ask for a bench trial or jury trial.
And I think where I'm going with this is...
Everyone that has got one has paid it, because it hasn't made it to...
Now, those that, whatever, of violations, because of non-compliance, or the speeding?
Um, well, on ours, it just shows other ordinance, so it could be any of those violations, it can be speeding, it can be operating with a minor child, it can be a minor child operating the vehicle.
Okay.
You know, there's different violations of the ordinance, if you will. Riding on the service road, riding on Highway seventeen, riding on Business twenty, those are three that I know for sure, we have gotten multiple times.
Yeah, we got thirty miles an hour on Highway seventeen, man.
And they can cross over from one street to another, they just cannot go on those highways. And I think Business twenty is probably the one that probably catches a couple of people, you know, they may be trying to get, say, to the west side of town, and they just wanna go through Business twenty, but it's a state highway, we're not allowed to get privileged to that.
And that's not the city, that's the state.
That's correct.
Yeah. Mussels repressors, windshields, glass windshields, I play some glass, four-point restraint system or three-point restraint system?
Turn signals, all of that. All of that's part of your inspection, yes.
All of you have.
Correct, yes, sir.
All the upgrades are like forty-five to five thousand dollars on all these machines?
Per machine?
Per, per machine.
Yeah.
Per machine.
You see our point though, right? I mean, we're not trying to target any group or penalize y'all, or say you can't have those types of vehicles, they're very expensive, um, you guys work hard for your money, you take care of it, but you see our point that we have, I'm sure you guys have seen it, like kids driving them, I mean, we're here in the middle, like the heart, oil field, oil and gas, there's eighteen years everywhere, there's kids, um, parents that aren't doing the job that you guys are hopefully doing. Um, I'm not gonna lie, I, I was against it last year, um, for safety reasons, um, I feel that those vehicles, they're cool, I mean, they're, they look fun, to have out, like, on the sand dunes, or like on the beach, or Balmory, or something, but like, here in Pecos, like with all of this traffic, it just like, I don't, I don't understand, and I'm not trying to, that's my, that's me, right? Like, I don't have it, I'm for it, I don't have it, I, I just, it just doesn't seem safe, but that's my, that's me, right? Like, I, um, but you guys, I want y'all to understand that we're not trying to pick on y'all, or say like, oh, because of the other bad apples, it's ruining y'all's group, you know, you guys are in compliance, you invest, um, it's just, it's complicated, you know, in new communities, trap, like travel, um, communities, I, I get it, also, um, Balmory, even, maybe even Fort Davis, you know, it's just smaller communities, here with all this oil field traffic, we still have eighteen years, um, going through city streets, and I know it's a challenge for the officers to have to police, um, and give tickets and stop, and you're right, once, I mean, I live, um, off of Fifth Street, and they haul blood, and it's kids, you know, by the time I get, I mean, call it in or whatever, it's like, they've disappeared, and somebody's gonna get hurt, um, they could cause an accident, they can, God forbid, something happens to them, it's just, it just doesn't seem, maybe Pecos fifteen, twenty years ago, but Pecos now, I just don't, I, I don't know, I, um, it just seems really unsafe. And I know motorcycles are probably more open, there's more, um, exposure to the elements, and on impact, I know they could be deadly. I just don't see ten-year-olds and eight-year-olds and kids with a lap, like, going on a motorcycle, you know what I mean, these vehicles, I guess it's the, um, it's the in being, you know, kids want to, they wanna be cool, they wanna be driving it, I, but you're, you guys know that the kids are the ones that are ruining it, ruining it for you guys that are doing the, doing it the right way, and I, I hate that for y'all, because it is an investment, and I don't want you guys to think that, I don't care about that, and I do, and, I don't know, it's, it's really, it's...
Would you, would you guys have, would you guys have an issue turning in your neighbor if he was riding, his kid was riding, because that's policing each other. You know, this is about, what y'all, what y'all want, and we opened it up to, to you guys, but would you have a issue if your neighbor's kid is driving his, his ROV, that eventually would affect you?
See, the, the thing with that is, whenever it's the people that we know, we let them know, but there's a lot of other people out there that we have no idea...
Yeah, we don't even know who they are.
Yeah, so, how, how are we to just stop and tell them, like, hey, you know, this is wrong, you can't do that, which we can, but what if that escalates to a bigger issue with them?
Yeah, escalates to...
Yes.
And that's, and that's a deal of policing, because I had, I had the opportunity to stop one, and I told him, he can't be driving it, 'cause it was his grandkid, and it just happened that I knew the, I knew the gentleman.
Which I, I wouldn't mind doing it, but am I gonna have PDs back if it gets there, like, to that, that level?
Yeah, that's...
Unless not jurisdiction.
It's not, it's possible.
You have problems with somebody else, you know, here.
Yeah, we are.
How y'all brought up that, it's hard to see that sticker in the front of the windshield, because they're driving behind them. Where if there's a sticker that we could put on our license plates, showing, or the way they do the inspection in, like, California and in Mexico?
Something a little bit bigger.
Those more ID tags or something. They put those stickers on the top corner of the license plates, showing that's...
Or, or what color is it anyway?
Right now, it's turquoise, it works like a turquoise blue.
But it changes color every year.
Oh, every year it changes?
Yes.
Because, you know, it's, it's weird, because you can drive a golf cart from your house within two miles of, of a golf course.
If you're legal, if you're of legal age.
Yeah, of legal age, but that's still, to me, it's like, no windshield, no signal light, no nothing.
Kids in the back, no taillights, I see it all the time.
And then ours, we have seatbelts, roll cages, harnesses, that, windshields, mirrors...
Reflectors, lighting, everything.
You cannot...
I'm gonna say it, like I said, it's invisible, you, you like it, you survive more on the roller than those that in the motorcycle.
Yeah, I see kids drive, I'm allergic to kids riding motorcycles. And the golf carts too, in Texas.
No, I see it in my, my house in Alamo. And, this is the first reading, sorry, we got one more to do.
Can, can we see about getting stickers to the license plates?
To the back. If we gotta change it up, we can.
We'll, we're adjusting to y'all's ordinance, that's, that's what we're doing, we're just trying to comply.
It's council's ordinance, we'd have to, we'd have to modify something, but yeah, absolutely, it could be, could be done.
For kids, they sell buddy seats.
It wouldn't be that hard to change it, but it doesn't stipulate in there that, the only thing that I think the ordinance does say is that it'll be affixed to your front windshield. So it means that probably what I would recommend if we're going to try something like this is to issue the same turquoise, uh, sticker that goes on the windshield with a similar turquoise sticker that would go on the plate that would, just like they do that you're talking about, so you add it both ways.
You used to, whenever you get your, inspect your car and go get registered, you'd get a new sticker for your license plate that had a year on it.
Yes, right.
So, I mean, something like that, and it would be the same color as the sticker and then you would get that renewed every year.
Yeah, and that's something, that, that's an easy fix on that, if that's what council desires.
So if we decide to keep it active, let's say till the end of the year. And then till the end of the year, we, we, then we make a, and I'm just, that's just my idea. Just to give this guy, since this guy's going here in the first, the first round, but this will give you a chance to talk to those other people. Because if they're gonna be, and this is what I was gonna say earlier. Can we confiscate those things? Like what we impound cars?
You can. Why not? I mean, it's just like anybody riding without a license.
Without an inspection sticker, without anything.
Same thing with the corners.
Until they come and pay you the fines.
Legally, we can't do that?
This is, this is not a state law, it's a city ordinance, so you're gonna get into some of that difference. With a state law violation, of course, we can impound, we can arrest on classy violations. This would be on the city ordinance.
Little bit of an issue, public ticket, so.
Yeah.
But if they're not legal, not in compliance with that?
If they were on a.
No way you have to impound it or.
If they were on, if they were on a state highway.
Increase the fine.
Increase the fine. Increase the fine for those viol, the violators.
We have no issue with that because.
We can't.
Ordinance, if you get the fine, you have to pay the fine and get the inspection.
Make it up to maybe like a thousand dollars or fifteen hundred, I don't know, make it just really painful for somebody to know like, hey, you know what? I'm gonna let my kid.
I think our ordinance is like a, actually five hundred except in certain circumstances, I don't know if this qualifies.
Okay.
Right now, right now it's a range of two fifty to five hundred, you could make it five hundred. But that's the most as it can, I understand.
And just to be a little personal side on my side, my supervisor said, man, I can't wait to get my ROV over here. I said, you might have to hold off.
It's very enjoyable, especially when you have your family with you. I mean, that's, I mean, even though it's just a small town of Pecos, I mean, I mean, if you, if you actually take the time to actually ride around, you can actually make a good night out of it, the whole night, you know? I mean, it's just, yeah, I understand what you're saying, we don't have the pathways for the rutas and all that, for the dirt roads and whatnot, but even to the end, like I said, you know, it's just, I mean, you can still make a good ride throughout, just in town and.
Just let the vehicle buddy is driving around, you know?
Exactly. Catch a diner.
Can I get your speaker?
Adam Garcia?
Adam Garcia?
Yes, ma'am.
I would encourage, gentlemen, ladies, I would encourage some kind of education, training, social media platform, should you create a group to inform the other people that are not aware of the ordinance and how to operate. City wants to jump on that, I don't know if we got one or not at the moment, but we, at one point, would make just quick educational, informal, I think some of the people lack the understanding of the ordinance. So that, you know, being such a social media world that we live in now, to create a group to inform the other people to be aware of the bullet points, five hundred dollar fine, so forth and so forth. So, that's what I think, you know, a lot of people always in social media, it would hurt to create a group and inform the rest, educate.
So here we are in the half, half of the year gone. So if the council agrees, I'd like to keep it on and then we, we, we look at it in January, the first meeting of January, we could look at it again. So I make that motion and, and if, and if what Councilman Carrasco asked, if, if y'all can form where you, you educate each other, you talk to each other and, and you see a mother in the street stop and say, hey, we got a group, this is it. Because in six months, if it doesn't comply, everything goes away. The next time I wanna see this, it's gonna be yay or nay, no, no discussion. Because that's, I mean, we already gave it a little over a year, I think it was last October. Uh, but since you guys came out like this, uh, but it's up to the rest, I, I just made the motion.
One quick question before we take the second. How many of you live in Pecos, personally?
Four hundred.
With a home?
Four hundred Pecos?
Yeah.
Four hundred Rans?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The previous group, too many of them were.
A third of them were, yeah.
Belmans, I guess.
Yeah, I believe the last time that we were, most, all of us were working at the town that we couldn't be able to make it, especially the conference, you know, because we're, we're just like anybody else, we're trying to provide for the families as well.
Yeah, absolutely.
Because I agree with, uh, Councilman Carrasco, you know, you spend that money, you buy it to, to use it. And I'm pretty sure some of you bought it when you heard a Pecos highlighter, or that we were allowed to.
That's not too much.
I don't know, but please don't come front, take a picture, if it's got a license, take a picture, send it to, send it to police, don't get involved, don't take it at your own hands.
To clarify, was your motion to table this ordinance repealing the prior one until later? Or are you simply, without an affirmative vote, the first reading it just dies and you can just bring it back again later, so whichever way you all want to do it.
If we take no action, it just dies.
I have a question on that, but is it possible piggybacking off of, sorry?
Can you identify yourself, ma'am?
Sorry, Marissa Flores. So, to piggy off, piggyback off of what Councilman Carrasco said, is it, is there anything in place now that kind of gives you like a course or something you have to take when you apply to have one of these?
It's not like a motorcycle, what motorcycle, you have to take the course.
Little smart.
Is it possible for them to do that just because it's taking the accountability off of them, just like you said, you don't want them, we can't really truly expect them to approach people and say, hey, you're doing something bad. It's not their job to do that.
No.
And so, in other words, you're holding them accountable because they're having to take this course in order to have one of those.
We can research a few areas.
And you're equally taking the accountability off of them.
For this.
Yeah, they're cost over. But if you hold them accountable and they say, well, we now, well, you took the course. And unfortunately, at this point, this doesn't mean confiscated, you took the course, you signed the paper, you're done.
No, if there is.
Because it is an ordinance, again, we go back to that, it's, it's not violation of the state law, we have passed the ordinance. Now, if we eliminate the ordinance, we go back to state law, then yes, we can confiscate, we can take them. But as far as making them take a course, that's like telling somebody before you buy a motorcycle, you have to take some kind of motorcycle class, you can't endorse them to do that. You know, these are off-road, or they can do stuff off-road.
And. The consequences are the same, so why not?
Understood. These are not legislative approved as highway vehicles, that's where we get into the, the fact that it is not a highway approved vehicle and your cycle is over. So you can do whatever on private property where you wanna go onto your own ranch or your own property and do these things. It's when it becomes a state or local road that these changes have come into place. And just another quick statement, you know, if some of the names presented that they have their stuff in order, there's at least one of the names on the list that is not in compliance that's here at this meeting, so. You know, it's, this is kind of what we're dealing with.
Yeah.
Again, we don't, we don't care either way, we gotta enforce the ordinance, we gotta enforce state law, this department is, is neutral in this aspect and we gotta do whatever it is we have to do as well. I think there is some confusion, um, some of you gentlemen talked about the golf carts. You will see people out in golf carts that are being stopped, golf carts are not under this ROV ordinance. There is a law that allows them to travel to and from a golf course. When you see a child driving around the neighborhood, that's not to and from a golf course. When you see a golf cart, it uncools at this gas station, that's not part of this, that's still illegal.
So for that person, does not comply, shame on you for being here, you're not complying. And you're trying to ride as a coach, tail so the guys are trying to, the people are trying to do it correctly, shame on you.
And the majority of the people that come into the PD for these inspections, very respectful, all compliant, we've had no issues whatsoever. In fact, I take it on myself to educate myself on the ROVs when they come in, like what does this do and where did this come from? So I have educated myself a little bit, inspecting some of these even on my own, if there's an auto officer that would do these inspections.
Which if y'all would like to set something up with the police department, give it a couple of nights together and show them as well, what he does on each machine and stuff like that, like you know, what should we have?
Because it is interesting on the emissions part or on the, whatever the muffler type of stuff is, because some of them are older ones, they may not have what's the compliant and they have spent the money to get them where they're legal to follow the ordinance.
But I think I hear the chief being more favorable to you guys.
I'm really just, I'm neutral on that because either way, we have to enforce whether it's city ordinance or it's state law. I mean, we're neutral on it, we don't really have a say-so either direction. Uh, we had to educate a little bit with DPS because they're here working operations, I'm sure that DPS has made some traffic stops because in most cities, it is illegal. And so aside from beachfront properties, this is a kind of a unique ordinance that doesn't happen very often out here.
Just one time, dude.
So partner, can the motion that Councilman Carrasco made, can he modify and say, I make a motion, we approve, I mean, we keep the ordinance as yes, or will be reviewed in six months?
I don't really think you need to. If it, if, the ordinance on the agenda today is to repeal. If there's no affirmative vote for that, it dies, it fails.
There's no motion or second, it dies.
And it can always be brought back in six months to, um, and go repeal if you also desire, so.
I'll second, we increase the fine and let them know when we mean business.
So that's not on the agenda for today, but we can bring that back.
The goal is to rescind it or not.
Yeah. But next time we do, Councilman Carrasco, you can bring that up.
So do we add a motion or we just take it?
No motion.
No motion?
Just take it.
So no action on this?
Thank y'all.
Okay?
Thank y'all, appreciate it.
Help us out.
Thank y'all for coming.
We'll do our best.
Help us out by helping yourself, doing the right thing yourself, especially that one that, getting compliant, getting compliant.
Say what it is.
Huh?
Say what it is.
No, we can't.
Once again, appreciate y'all, thank y'all.
Thank y'all. Appreciate it.
Okay, we'll go to Idaho State Courts. To discuss amending the Chapter Three Eighty Tax Abatement Agreement in Hecarpania, HP conscription as approved at the 124, twenty twenty-four Register City Council meeting. Strategic Goal Six, Sound Government Governance and Fiscal Management, Charles.
Mayor and Council, Charles Lena, City Manager. Uh, this is one that was approved back in October. Uh, Hector's asked that it be modified, he's coming to present to you all and give you his, what he's looking for and what he is asking for the amendment, so I'm gonna turn this one over to him. Thank you, sir. Hector, where are you?
Good afternoon, council members, um, thank you for having me today. We're setting up the, I just passed out the blueprints that were, are gonna be turned in to the city to get approved. Um, this is my architect today with me, in case there's any questions about stuff that's above my knowledge. Pablo Guerre, architect. So, this would be the three D model of it, right? Um, we are building in a part of town that has been empty for a very long time. It's been collecting no tax money for the city or the county or anybody for that matter. I believe it's been empty for a very, very long time. Of course, we're, we're asking for a full tax abatement for ten years, which will be very helpful to continue building, because this is not the only project that we'll build in Pecos. I'm on the younger side of my life at the moment and I'll continue to be an attorney here in West Texas for a very long time to come. Um, so, but this is my first project and most of my projects will be here in Pecos, um, because this is my home. I do know that what the abatement I'm asking for is abatements that have been given before and are being considered now for bigger companies, right? Uh, I'm a local, asking for the same thing that we give strangers. I'm a local asking for the same thing that we give multi-billion dollar companies. So, that would, that type of help for locals will encourage locals to also invest in their community. Uh, because that's what we want, we want our locals to invest in our communities along with multi-billion dollar companies, we want everybody to invest. As far as the jobs being created by this, there'll be about forty jobs to build, right? And it's gonna be forty jobs for a term of nine to ten months. Permanent jobs that this will create should be around fifty to sixty permanent jobs. I've set aside four drive-throughs that are made specifically for restaurants. They're in the corners, here, here, the corner way here and here. Those will be creating a sales tax, which will make up for the abatement that I will be, would be receiving if you guys prove it. So there will be no money lost. On the long term, there will be more tax money for everybody. And, um, I do believe this is the first of its kind, as far as the plaza goes in Pecos. Um, and I hope it's, after this one, Sunday won't be the last. Uh, the town will be, continue to grow. And looking forward to that. Aside from that, this will create the quality of life, right? It'll create more things for people to do in town, because there'll be different restaurants they can try, right? At the moment, if you log into your app to order food, there's only three restaurants, four restaurants. There's not much selection for the people here, most of the time, people have to leave all the way to Odessa to get the type of food they want. Uh, this would kind of help them have more options for people that are locals. So when they wanna go eat or go shopping. At the top of my head, these are some of the ups, right? And the abatement would help me to continue building in the future, because that's what my goal is. Um, is there any questions next moment?
One, one question I have is, uh, I was looking at that a little.
Well, that's my, that's, that's gonna be, that's my office.
That's gonna be your office?
Yes.
Do you have potential businesses already?
Uh, I have about a nine thousand left to lease out, I already have leased out about half of it. So, this is gonna fill up pretty quickly.
This is roughly eighteen thousand, it's fourteen of businesses, so.
And I have not, I have not advertised it whatsoever. It's just friends and people that have heard about it, when they call us, sign there, what's gonna go up here. Uh, so people are looking forward to it and it is locals, locals are, are fifty percent of the people that are gonna lease out at the moment. Local businesses, which is what I wanted to promote. Locals opening up their dream businesses and, you know, moving forward in life, that's what we want, right? We want everybody to have the opportunity, especially locals, to make more money, to open up their businesses, you know, to live their dreams, things like that.
What is your average square foot on these, uh, what are you charging for a square foot on these little offices?
As far as the, the cost charging for square foot, we haven't come to a concrete number, but locals are getting better.
You have an idea of what locals?
Yeah, correct. Locals should be anywhere from twenty-three to twenty-five, which is lower than what's being offered at the moment by the little strip plazas that they have over there where we set. So we'll, we'll be charging less in there.
And these are standard twenty by sixty units, which is the common retail space, right? Twelve hundred square feet. These terms, three years, give or take?
The terms should be at five years. Obviously, if they want to lease out longer, they get a better deal.
You would do anything less than five years?
Uh, yes, we would, depending on situation. So like, we're only doing anything less than three years, but three years for yet for there.
One of the things I like about this would be, it, it's, you know, we have that small plaza over there, but now, this one, this one gets built. It actually brings something totally different into the, the center part of town. And not only that, but, but this afternoon I met by Alfredo's and Alfredo's, the, the restaurant Alfredo, the way they're, they're building. It's kind of already starting to change the, the visual of, of Cedar. And, and bringing something new like that will help promote, I think, uh, you know, like CTG upgraded their deal, the, the, what's that other place? The, uh, Allseps, they redid their, this one sits in the middle, Alfredo's is doing their, their part and it, it's looking nice. And, but it's something that we're trying to build, plus this would, uh, if I understand it right, this falls into our, our, our zones, into one of our, into our, uh, the zone that, that was created. Ter, Terz Zone.
Terz.
T R I Z.
Z I R C.
Well, I, I think, you know, I, I know. Well, I, I think, you know, I, I know you came before and we, we worked one out and, but you're, you're investing your own money. You're investing your.
Correct. I am the only investor. I invest, I'm investing, you could say, pretty much any profits I've gotten from clients in this area. I do have a big law firm. It's biggest here, and it's one of the top ones in Odessa. But I will continue to invest here because this is my home. I've decided to live here. No matter how successful I become, I will always stay in Beccos. Right now, the office, the office is looking for two new locations, you know, potentially McAllen, McAllen, Texas, and then Plaza, right? I'm expanding. But Beccos is a place I will always call my home.
Hector, you said the first time that you didn't need the five-year abatement to go here to build it, except for some things.
Correct. Just like those billion dollar companies. They don't need it. They can build.
Right. If they have competition, you know, they might, that's one we do give a billion dollar companies.
Yeah, no, but there's competition.
Like you said, he said earlier, Odessa really wants some of it, but we're going to be dealing here in Beccos.
Yeah. Say it again. Say it again.
Odessa wants what's going to be coming to Beccos.
Correct.
They're going to go after that. There's competition.
This is like you said, this is something that hasn't been built here. I'm choosing my home to build it. I'm choosing to invest in my home. And I hope that's taken into consideration.
It's a great project. I mean, I go to Tres Armanas Boulevard in Odessa. You're familiar with it. Cork and Pig Tavern, right? So this is kind of a mini thing. One thing that I envision, just my opinion, what I like about that place is they keep up with the seasons through farmers markets, Christmas bazaars, stuff like that. That helps bring in, also draw people off 285. So when I think of this, I think of that kind of place.
We purposely gave a little bit of more space in front of that bigger building, deeper, about 10 feet in front to where you can actually sit up front and either have dinner, lunch, whatever, hoping for markets as well.
Which building are you talking about?
The bigger building in Beccos.
The one in the back.
Those names are not the, these are.
No, they're just.
Right.
So we just have to put names.
What kind of, I, I like the idea because it's like I said earlier, Beccos is moving, and it's moving into the modern world, and we need to move. I know we're, we're, we're working for down, getting downtown, you know, upgraded where the, the people that are around here can actually walk around and go different places. Well, this would be another place to actually go park and walk all around, you know, just like you do out, we, we love going to Midland to that, that strip mall that has, what is that, Skechers and all that there on, and, and that's what I see, people just walking around. Instead of driving, they park and, and go. And, and you know, it's something different. I mean, you know, if I need clothes, I have to go to Odessa. You know, if I, anything I need, I have to go to Odessa. We don't have it here. I'm, I'm not going to Walmart. Not, not that I'm that high, high end, but, you know, it, it, it gives opportunities for businesses that are, for people that are living here that, hey, man, I can rent a little spot and put my, whatever they want, you know, up in there. You know, we don't have music stores here. We don't have, nothing. Beccos doesn't have nothing at the moment. And, and that disappoints me a lot that we have to go out of town to, to enjoy something like this.
And people have had the opportunity to build here for a very long time.
Yep.
It's about.
Roddy Harrison had that, and he wouldn't sell it to him, but.
There's a lot of other properties. So I believe that this would show initiative for our locals. You know, hey, we can do that too. Not just companies like United or Walmart. Us locals, we can also push forward things like this. Because the most important about building in Beccos is things that create jobs. This would create jobs, things that create, that would create more tax dollars for the city. This is going to create a lot of tax dollars. And I believe jobs and tax dollars are what the city needs. Like any other city in the United States, jobs and tax dollars are never a bad thing.
And you'll offer diversity, what we were talking about earlier.
Correct.
Without, just not in the oil field or in the power plant or, you know, it'll offer people that don't like to work under sun, be inside.
Correct. Like I said, there should be 50 to 60 jobs, right? And these people need homes. Thank God, the other party we had before me, they're going to create 35 homes, right? So, and there's a lot of apartments being built. So it's going to help keep those apartments full and more money being spent around town.
The landscape, is it going to look that beautiful?
I mean, architect, it will look that beautiful.
We made it look good facade, right?
Yeah.
Well, could you put zero skate?
Yes, correct. It'll be easier to keep up with it, make sure that the trees are nice and everything.
We'll bring in bigger caliber trees just to make it a little bit luxury, you know, not wait 10 years to see it look that way.
Just don't put your big trees next to the power lines, okay?
No, the power lines run in, you know, parallel to that.
What's your expected start date?
The expected start date, I believe the blueprints are going to be submitted in a week or two.
We're 90% complete in construction documents. We'll be able to submit in two weeks. I don't know how long it's going to take here to get a permit. You know, Pat, I'm from El Paso. It's taken about three, four weeks to get a permit. If you guys are that speedy or even speedier, we could start immediately.
As far as, I did change architects in the middle of the project, right? I wanted to get someone of higher quality. I do have one of the best, obviously.
Thank you.
You're welcome. He's used to building, he's going to help me with the apartment complexes. I look forward to building in the future, and I do want to consider Beccos for that. Depending on what Beccos needs, I'm more than happy to build it out of my own pocket. As I always do, it's, everything I do is out of my own pocket.
Probably July-ish, probably.
Hopefully July, and it's going to be, maybe nine to 10 months of construction from initiation for moving. You know, first time, you know, we moved dirt, not, not from initiation or permit, but we start construction.
Just, this is what I tell everybody. Whatever your plans are, as soon as you get something more solid, get them text from Mexico. Given your plans, there's long lead hours.
Correct. And that's a very good point, Councilman. He, the architect is going to stay with us throughout the whole project. I have subcontracted his services and a contractor from El Paso. They're going to be in charge. They've worked together multiple times and have had various successful projects in El Paso. So they're going to work together to make sure that this runs timely and everything runs efficiently.
Yeah, we've got.
It'll be on the ground service.
Yeah, we, we do all, I mean, it's a one-stop shop.
He asked the question.
We can do construction management as well. So we'll be able to build this for him.
You'll be on the ground? Your utilities, electric, utilities?
Utilities are over here.
I know, but going into your village.
Oh, yes.
I believe Mr. Luchover had something on?
Mayor, Council, thank you. The, Mr. Penya has kept us abreast of what's going on. He's made multiple visits with the, with the Board of Directors, letting them know the status. Obviously, the biggest of the delay was the curb cut for 285. When I talked to Mr. Penya and asked him about what he was going to actually ask of the council, he informed me that, of course, he wants the maximum abatement. And I said, well, that's not realistic based upon the way that we've treated other groups, especially those that are in the, in the business of the retail or hospitality. That being said, he asked me, what would the typical ask be? And I said, I don't even know what the council offered. I think it was a five, or offered a five-year abatement at 50.
Five and decline.
Okay. And of course, he came back to me and asked me, well, can it be 10? I said, well, it can be anything, but you got to convince the council. So he asked me to, you know, kind of draw up different scenarios. And of course, if it was the wish of the council and based upon the fact that it is in the TIRZ, I would always encourage the council, don't start until the first year of completion and operation. That's where you're going to get the biggest bag, the biggest bang for your dollars as far as the TIRZ. And after that, if it was staggered, then you could go 195, 90, 85 increments of five, or you go 190, 80, all the way down. But again, I'm not here to advocate one way or the other. It's just the different formulas that we use. It's a little bit harder to do an economic impact study when it comes to a project like this than it is to actually deal with job creations that are higher volume, things that are coming from the state or the federal government, which we calculated. However, you know, you look at it and it's going to take an eyesore away from us. But at the end of the day, it's the council answering to the constituents as to what is going to be fair, you know, and what's in your heart as to, as to what you think is appropriate. You know, you've done it many times in my presence where, you know, you got to use good common sense. So I'll leave that to you. This is one of those times that I get to say, yes, my predecessor started it. I'm hopefully going to help finish it up. But at the end of the day, it's up to, it's up to you guys. It's a, it's a tough decision.
I know his agreement with y'all is that you have to start construction a year from the curb cut or whatever.
Correct.
Has that been extended now?
It, it has. And, and we, we're doing it on a month-by-month basis. Mr. Lino has informed the, the, the directors and myself as to the delays and what caused it. They don't have a problem in the delays or, or they don't have a problem in extending it. What they asked is that we keep them abreast every month of what we're doing. And they have drawn a line in the sand of July as to when we have to come back and notify the council as to what that extension is going to be or not. So, you know, we still got it, what, a couple of 60 days really to go.
How much time does it take for it to go?
Six months. They delayed it six months. And mainly because of the time that they asked, they put it on the agenda, and then it missed its, its year permit by five days, and they made it start all over again. That's what caused the biggest of the delays.
I know GNP probably had a little bit to do with it.
Yes, sir. And, and it was. It was, okay, how are we going to sit down and make sure that it, it's one cut from 285? It's not like what is on US 285, the new restaurant. You know, those existing cuts were allowed to stay. But with Mr. Penya's project, it was one cut coming in. And you can see the others come from the side or from Ash Street. So. Any other questions?
I like one thing that expect, City Manager Lino said it, and it's, we, we need to be business friendly, which we haven't been in a long time. And, but not, not too easy. Neither, we don't want to be taken advantage of. But I, I like, I like this project. I think, I think this project is, is going to be very beneficial to our community because I think it'll open doors for something else that, that somebody else can say, well, if he can do that, can do something maybe better. You know, because we already have, we already see the, the, the stuff that's happening, like, especially with United, they brought the strip mall. Now, we got Dollar Tree, you know, Burger King and all that. So there's things, you know, across the street, you got, you got the, and I guess a motel, something's going on with that motel because it's been painted. So, and then you look at Lincoln Street and all that drain, new drainage that they're doing. So there's stuff that, it's moving.
That's right.
And we can't stop. We cannot allow us to be held back because, well, I don't like it or I don't like. I mean, we, we got to come in with an, an open idea. And, and I think it was, Mr. Lino said it, you know, nothing's promised. It's until you take a leap of faith and do it. Nothing, we can't guarantee nothing, but you got to take that leap of faith at one time or another and do something like, just like we did the water, that, I mean, not the water part, but the baseball field. Now we got it.
I like it. It's been sitting there a long time. When I first moved here in 2012, I envisioned something like this. But my question was which investor was going to take on the project. So I think it's a great project, and I think it gives other investors opportunities should they want to bring in many franchises or something of that nature. That would be beneficial. But at the end of the day, if nobody does it, who's going to do it? It's been sitting there for 20 years, 30 years.
More. Come on, more.
I would, I would born around there.
Okay. You had it signed the first time. I would probably vote for it. And if you want to bring that back, I'll vote for the first five years. But the 10 years is open a Pandora box with the other businesses in town. You know, if everybody comes in, they get a 10-year deal, that's going to be a drain on the city. And you're saying, like you said, you're going to do it anyway. And you got the five-year under your belt. So I just, you know, I just can't go with a 10-year sale. I think that's going to be bad for the city.
So if we could ask, you know, a midpoint would be the 10-year de-escalation as our PDC director said, a 100, a 95, a 90, and 85? We consider that in both on that because that's more like of a midpoint from what Mr. Graham is offering?
I would make an offer.
No, he is.
But, you know, I'd like the five-year, you know, and I support that now.
Well, I kind of, like I said, I don't want to slow down anything, but I, I'd like the 10-year de-escalating, but in the, in the 90, 80, 70.
Mayor and Council, just so you know, this is a discuss item. So we want Hector to tell us what he wants, then we can have the discussion with you, and we will bring it back, either at a special meeting or the next meeting with the agreement as to what council is directing us to do. So we can't make a decision tonight.
Oh, that's right.
So it's a discussion item only, okay?
Okay.
But we do need to hear what everybody wants.
Okay. But, so I'm looking at the other agreement, and this says that it was effective January 1st, valuation date immediately following the execution of this agreement. Can we change this so that it's on completion of the project?
Absolutely. Yes, yes, Mayor, absolutely.
And, and that's, if you use that standard, especially then during the TIRZs, the winner actually becomes the city. And that it's up to, to Mr. Penya if he wishes to go and ask the other entities if they want to participate or not. I mean, it's, it's not on you, it's on them.
But that's just one of our options.
And we, I mean, I would be open to the, I pay taxes for the first year and then we do it after, how, how it's going to be done for that company that came in here right before me. That's an option. I don't mind paying taxes the first year, right? But I would love to have the, the midpoint would be the de-escalation of 10 years down. I think that'd be a great choice.
Okay.
Y'all need me for anything? Is there any questions from me?
Thank you, Councilman, for taking your time.
Hey, guys, sorry. I was looking at the other one. I was looking at discuss and consider what was that five. So sorry, my bad.
No, and it is something that we can bring it back to Hector. I'll talk to council, get their guidance, and if they decide on material, then we'll draw it up that way and prove it.
Got the special or this one?
Our next, our next regular meeting is going to be, well, we got to.
Thank you for your time, everybody. Appreciate it.
Yeah.
And any recommendations from the councilmen or what they should have at every moment you have here?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, man, those things.
Very common.
Okay, we'll go on to Idaho F. File. We got the phone on. Discuss, consider approval of a plan of finance for USDA funding of the Beccos well-being project. Strategic Goal Six: Sound Governance and Fiscal Management, Charles Lino, City Manager.
Mayor and Council, Charles Lino, City Manager. This agreement that we're looking at for the plan of finance and the sister one that'll be the next one on the notice intent relate to the USDA, the water project that we're doing. And this is just what USDA requires. We do have our financial advisor, Dan Mart, Robert T. Nahuado's group on the phone, as well as Dan Martinez, who's our bond counsel. And I'm going to turn it over to them and let them explain it to you because they're much more, much better well-versed than I am. Dan, can you hear us? Esther?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Well, I guess to get started, do y'all have in front of you the presentation we put together, the plan of finance presentation?
You see you.
Oh, okay. Give them, and I can present, okay?
Yeah, that would be great.
All right. All right. Can y'all see this?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
All right. Well, again, thank you for, for having us, joining virtually. But my name is Thomas Straps, T. Arena Financial Consulting. Robert Simpson apologizes if he could not join the meeting. But we're just going to briefly run through what the plan of finance is going to be for these combination tax and revenue certificates of obligation, Series 2025, that will be purchased by the USDA, US Department of Agriculture. Looking at the estimated projects, project amount and par amount, so it's a principal amount because of the bond, certificates of obligation, excuse me, will be 20, 40,700 to 1500. of obligation, excuse me, will be 20,407,000. And you can see that's for improvements to the water utility system, including transmission lines and wells. There likely will be some more specific language that we come up with, and Dan Martinez, bond counsel, will help us with that. This slide here, I know it might be difficult to read, but essentially what we're doing here is projecting what your future tax rate requirements are gonna be. Column E represents your currently outstanding principal and interest payments, which go from, you know, 2025 this year, obviously through 2052. Column E represents the proposed debt service on the new USDA loan. And so you can see that our estimate of interest rate on that loan is a fixed interest rate of 1.37%. And then the repayment term of the loan is 40 years, so going from 2026 through 2065, excuse me. Column G represents the city's intention to use water and sewer utility revenues to make payments on the USDA loan. So you'll note that the tax rate does not take a hit due to the issuance of this new loan, because it is gonna be repaid with water and sewer system revenues. So you'll note that, obviously, your tax rate requirements and at the end of your existing debt there. So, and of course, you know, as council, you have the authority every year when you set your tax rate to adjust your level of revenue support versus tax support. So that can change year over year in case there's any revenue constraints that come up with the water and sewer utility system. Any questions on this portion here? All right, this is our proposed timeline for the transaction. So obviously today, meeting to discuss the plan of finance and the issuance of the notice of intent. We'll do two publications of the notice of intent, the local newspaper. And then we're looking at Monday, July the 14th, to actually lock in the interest rate with USDA. So I mentioned that the estimated 1.37% for our numbers on the last slide. But, excuse me, on Monday the 14th of July, we'll be able to lock in that interest rate and have a further idea of what it will be. And then we'll come either in person or virtually on the 24th of July to discuss the final numbers and the approval of the sale. And about a month later, on August 21st, we'll close the financing, and you'll receive the project fund dollars at that point. So... Any questions on the timeline?
No, sir.
Okay. And then just looking at the working group of the transaction, you know, obviously yourselves, the issuer, your financial advisor is ourselves, T arena Financial Consulting. Dan Martinez, who's out with us at Winstead, will be your bond counsel. The purchaser is gonna be the United States Department of Agriculture. And then the paying agent for the transaction will be BOKF. And that's all I got. You know, again, there's no action required on this item here. Just wanted to discuss what we'll be doing over the coming months. If I get this transaction, you know, successfully concluded, we all get you your money, so you can get your project started.
Dan, do you have anything to add?
Uh, city, no, I speak to the next item.
That's what I thought. Yes, sir. Well, I just wanna, you saw the debt that we were gonna incur for our new wellfield. It's 24,750. The other piece of it is there's a grant attached to that that we've been talking about for a long time of a little over 15 million that'll complete the project. So the way that USDA works is you have to use all of the debt money first, and then you get, start getting the grant money. And our project is gonna go a little more than what we have for the debt and that. But we've already paid it upfront out of operating cash. So we'll be able to service the entire project with this funding from the USDA and the grant.
May I just write something?
Yeah. Yeah, we can get, I mean, the one with Texas Water Development Board was a better deal. We got 0% interest for the life of it. This one's 1.37. We can't, I mean, that's pretty good.
And this is for that new wellfield?
For the new wellfield and waterline and pump stations and holding tanks.
Okay. So nothing has been built yet until we get this financing?
It is. And contractors that were, that won the bids are waiting. And so I can tell you that they're chomping at the bit. So that August 21st date, they said they can't, it can't come soon enough. So...
Can I make a suggestion for next time? I want to be able to see it. I'm not like a numbers person, but I was, I mean... Not a small number.
Absolutely. We'll make sure that we get it to y'all earlier, and you have it in your packet that way.
Yeah, just something we can zoom in. I'm not a numbers gal, like branding, just sort of. Yeah, I would just, for next time, please. I would appreciate that.
Yes, for next time, when we present the final numbers for the transaction, we'll make sure to get you all the numbers packet that'll contain the information, the interest rate, and the annual payments, and the sources and uses of all the plugs and all that. So we'll have that available for y'all.
I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
As we present.
I wonder if we did before the meeting, too?
Yeah, you will. We'll have it before.
I'd like a motion to follow the resolution.
Plan of finance.
I'll say it.
I have a motion from Councilman Graham, a second from Councilman Arona, to approve the plan of finance for USDA funding. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The record shows the motion carries in item F6, Discuss, Consider Resolution 25-05-06R, a resolution authorizing publication of a notice of intention to issue certificates of obligation, Strategic O6 Sound Governance and Physical Management.
Dan, this is yours.
Yes, sir. Mayor, good evening, Dan Martinez of Winstead. Our pleasure to be with you and members of the council. And Mr. Lino mentioned it's an important project for the city, and he's been, he and the staff have been working on this for some time now with the USDA. And it's, generally, these USDA projects, you take a long time. But, though we weren't too surprised, but it is a lift, and I wanna kind of recognize the effort to get us to this point. You know, a couple of what he said with respect to the, to the grant, you know, we have a substantial grant amount, which is great for the city. But I will share that in my conversations with the USDA, they're anxious for the project, too. I mean, they're, they've been waiting to get to this point. I think they went out for bids, they approved, went out for bids, et cetera, as Mr. Lino kind of described, you know, what's the funding mechanism was gonna be, the grant from the city portion and also the CEOs. But the USDA's ready to get to this point as well. So I just wanna share that with you in my conversation. But just by way of background, folks, I know some of you may have been newer to the council and have not been through the debt process, per se. But we have done in the past. And this particular type of obligation, this particular obligation, by law is required to provide or issue a notice in the paper for two weeks straight. You know, I mean, the public knows that we're gonna issue these deals for this project, that we just described, and how much, et cetera. And they have to be published three times in the newspaper, but also published on your website. And Heather and Mr. Lino have helped us in the past in going through this process. And maybe some of the councils remember this, but I just wanted to share that to the newer folks, if I may. But it's required of it also. That's the first step, and that's why we're here tonight. I will share with you, though, the next step. Thank you for the timeline that Thomas shared. We will come back on the 24th, I think is the date he mentioned, in July. And the reason why it's so further out is because by law, this notice has to be out there in the public for 45 days. So this notice is out there, and we can't come back to authorize the sale, quote, to the USDA until that notice for 45 days runs. And so hopefully, God willing, we'll be there in person on the 24th, and we'll kind of explain some more. I'll have the final numbers, our final ordinance, et cetera, if not by Zoom. And the next step at that point would be, we have prepared a lot of legal documents up to this point, or some of them. They've been submitted to the USDA for their review, their legal, their legal team. We've gone back and forth with them on some of the documents as well. And so that's why we're here at this point. Once we got that squared away, Mr. Lino provided information, staff, you know, the utility department, et cetera, they said, okay, we went out for bids, and that's why we're here. But when we go sell the bonds to them on the 24th, at that point, what I do is I, you know, of course, I send a, we'll have a school document for signature for the mayor, city secretary, et cetera, and we'll submit, or I'll submit, my job is to submit those documents to the Texas Attorney General, who reviews all bond transactions in the state of Texas. And so they've basically checked my work, make sure we done everything properly. And part of that process includes going through this procedure tonight, authorizing this notice, making sure we publish, making sure it's on the website, things of that nature, and then going through the legal procedures that we're gonna do in the next week. That all gets reviewed, once it's approved, they check my work. If I have some errors or whatever, I'll make some changes. And then you get their approval, they'll issue an opinion. We register the bonds with the Texas Department, and then we'll close in August, as Thomas mentioned. The way the USDA works, and I think I heard Mr. Lino say that here at all, but, you know, the funds come into our escrow account, and they allow the city, or the parts of the city to draw, if you will. So, you know, with new construction, we get it, we submit it, once they check the work, or they agree, or that, you know, this is good, whatever, then they'll say, you know, they'll notify me and the city, we all communicate, and notify BOKF, that's the bank that Thomas mentioned, that they should release so much fund to the city. And then the BOK will issue so much in bonds to the USDA, because they approve the, if you will, the draw at that point, and the related documentation proving up the work that they're gonna spend the money on. So that's kind of the process we'll go through, then spend on bonds as we go. So it's a little different than we normally do, because that's how the USDA, even the Water and Water Board does it that way as well. So we've done that process as well. So anyway, that's the long-winded background, but I wanted to share that with you, because, you know, it's an important part of the process, and I wanna make sure everybody was comfortable with what we're doing. Any questions?
I didn't see them. It's like Valerie said, it was too small to see. Did y'all have a deal there that showed how long the bonds, really 20-year bonds?
Forty, 40-year bonds.
20-year bonds, okay.
So the USDA requires a 40-year amortization. The reason being, as my understanding, doing this for a long time, is, you know, they're trying to help communities do projects throughout the state and really across the country. And they try to provide low-cost financing to many communities. And so Thomas mentioned how low our interest rate was gonna be. I mean, that's crazy phenomenal for the city, 1.35. But also, for not the term, you have the big number, 40 years, we've been paying that for a long time. But it also allows the payment to be smaller as well, because you're paying over time. So you'll pay more interest, obviously, but our interest rate is really low as well. So I think there would be a potential refund if we need to. But when you're only paying 1.35%, I mean, that's not a bad deal.
If we could prepay them, but we had the option to.
We can?
Yeah, we're currently estimating about 7.7 billion in interest over the 40 years, about 24.7 billion in principal. So you can see the benefit of the low interest rate.
Yeah, and the question was, can you prepay them? And I believe the answer is yes.
Yeah.
Mayor, make a motion when you're ready. 7.7, I'm, excuse me, 7.6, I'm ahead of myself. I presented by Charles Lino, City Manager.
I'll say it.
No, I haven't talked to you lately.
We have a motion from Councilman Arona, a second from Councilwoman Trillo, to approve Resolution 25-05-06R. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show. The motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
All right, it's my be.
We wanna go ahead and skip to item F9, Discuss, Consider Pecos Housing Authority Window Projects, Strategic O5, promote open and consistent communication. Randy, go ahead.
I think the last meeting we had, we were wanting to know how many projects you've done. But I think y'all gave us, when I went to your meeting, y'all gave them a spreadsheet. And I don't think the rest of the council had anything.
On, this is, this is on the window, windows.
This is about windows?
That's Councilman Graham, that's a housing authority project.
Y'all hadn't started that then.
On the windows replacement?
I was thinking the home, all the projects.
For the home repair? That's the HFC thing. That's item 10.
Yeah, we're on F9. So we were wondering, on your, the windows that she presented on her budget, how many windows were replaced at that time?
Oh, I don't recall a number. But I gave you all a number on the report.
It was over $400,000.
The number of windows?
No.
Dollar amount.
Yes, the dollar amount. Yes, that's correct. $456,000.
Are they done already?
Yes, completed.
Which, which of projects, I mean?
The windows that we replaced were the ones on the east side of town by Bessie Haines. We've had our maintenance guys, you know, they're the ones that let us know what the windows look like and the troubles they're having, or if they need to get replaced or not. We find, saved enough funds, you know, to replace them. We find out what an estimate would be to replace them, and then we will get a consultant, we got a consultant involved who helped us out with the specs and the, and the plans. And then we go through our procurement policy, and it tells us what we need to do. Go through a bidding process. And we post it on newspapers, you know, this American and the Pecos Enterprise. We welcome all the, anyone that's interested. Since it's a project that's over $100,000, $100,000, it needs to be sealed bids. And the, anything over $50,000 has to be sealed bids, and anything over $100,000, they need, anyone that's interested in bidding has to be bonded.
So do you have documentation on, we all got it, or is it?
Of course. You know, the, prior to working with the, with the housing authority, I worked for the state for 30 years. And my job was to build roads and bridges, design the plans, specifications, come up with estimates. My last three years with the state, I was in charge for our district, over 1,200 structures, bridges. The, in those structures, if a structure got hit, I had to assess the damages, look for contractors, build the plans, specs, estimate, everything. A window project is nothing. And, but the, what guides me are, of course, the procurement policies that were set and approved also by the, our board. Yes.
So if we wanted the documentation, you could give that to us?
Yes, sir.
Make sure everything moves.
Yes, sir. I also, I mean, I have an auditor that looks at all of our documentation. He makes sure that we follow the, especially if we're a project that size, makes sure that we're taking care of business and we're following the procedures.
You talking about financial auditor?
An auditor. The names, not, I'm not talking about a fee accountant. I'm talking about a financial auditor. That's correct.
So with your financial statements, he does your financial statements?
That's, that's being done by a fee accountant. Our auditor is someone separate, which his name is Mike Estes.
Is he a CPA or what?
Yes, sir. He has his own firm. Yes, sir.
Okay. So you've got a CPA for the windows, and you've got a CPA for the financial audit of the business itself.
A CPA for the windows?
Well, yeah, I'm trying to, okay, you said you had an audit. I'm trying to think, you know, I'm trying to...
He audits all of our books.
Okay, that's what I was asking.
Yes.
Is there a current on that?
Yes, I dropped it off, I dropped off the...
2023 on...
2023 and 2024.
Why is it considered?
Should we discuss that?
Go to item fifty-six. Anything else? Go to item F10, discuss, consider amending the Pecos Housing Finance Corporation bylaws, strategic goal five, promote open and consistent communication. Randy?
I didn't drop my sunglasses that time. I learned from my mistakes.
Is that the one, I guess, four, when I was at Chelsea, the funds that Joe Reguilon and the finance company spent only in Reeves County?
Yeah, when we talked about it at the meeting, we talked about amending the articles, which is what the council can do. That's what Parker and I discussed, the bylaws are something separate that the board controls. So you discussed that you wanted an amendment to the articles, which trumped the bylaws, so I think that that's the best way to do it. You discussed you wanted amendment to the articles, that we only spend funds in Pecos City, and you want them for all of Reeves County? Okay, yeah, sure. What, I mean, whatever you guys want.
Is that what you, that was in your Chinese brother, the deals with you and Parker?
Sir, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's, is that the main change that you made in the bylaws?
There's no change.
We haven't changed it yet, because I was waiting to hear what you guys wanted to do.
So nothing been changed yet, but the way it's under it generally is to discuss, or consider amending the bylaws. The council, by statute, can amend the articles, the bylaws, as it's currently structured, can only be amended by the board. Now, if we amend the articles, you can give the council the power to amend the bylaws, but you kind of gotta go one step and then two steps.
Right.
We want to, we're wanting to amend the articles.
Right. The articles, by statute, council can control that, those trump the bylaws, the bylaws really have to be.
Yeah, so this, the state law says that anything in the bylaws that's inconsistent with the articles, the articles control. So if I were you guys, what I would do is amend the articles to say, hey, all these funds will stay in Reeves County, which is the intention of it, that's what's been done, but this way, this just gives you extra assurance that that's what's being done. And I'm happy to draft that language in consultation with Parker to present to you guys.
We could approve that modification today, the way it's noticed, but we can bring it on the next meeting, and amend the articles rather than the bylaws.
Yeah, just because it accidentally says bylaws for Open Meetings Act.
And actually, you could give the council authority to amend the bylaws if you wanted to, in the article, we can.
But we need to amend the articles first.
Yeah. Two-step process here.
What's your role?
I'm the attorney for the HFC.
So these bylaws, are we gonna be talking about the money that's the projects that were taken outside of Reeves County to stay in Reeves County?
All, all the money that the HFC, so the HFC, under state law, has the ability to spend its finances on affordable housing for low-income residents and charitable projects. Those are the two things it can spend money on, so.
The money that they made outside of Reeves County, is that gonna come back to Reeves County?
Correct, all, that's, that's what we're talking about.
Parker, am I allowed to ask questions on this?
Yeah, anything related to bylaws?
So how many projects are you at right now, outside of Reeves County?
How many have we done? Roughly a hundred?
Three hundred?
I said, uh, uh, one hundred, one hundred.
What is the average return for a $400,000?
For the HFC?
Mm-hmm.
It varies depending on the size of the project, but the upfront closing fee is anywhere from $150,000 to $250,000 per deal, and then there's a 10% ground lease payment on an annual basis going forward, based on what the tax rate is. So, for example, if you had a million-dollar tax bill, it's $100,000 annually, so for year one, that payment, assume, that's a big property, so assume that's a 400-unit plus in the price structure, so that would be a year-one return to the HFC of $350,000. Next year, it'll be $100,000 multiplied by 2%, so 102, and so forth, so forth.
So can we round that number up to $400,000?
Yeah, 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 for sure, I was just walking.
So that leaves us at $38 million, right?
Uh, I don't believe we're quite there, but, you know.
So ninety-five projects rounded off, maybe $40 million?
Not quite there, given that, you know, some of the fees aren't fully earned yet by the HFC, but, you know, I think that, last check, it was in twenty-something?
Nineteen.
Nineteen?
Yes.
We're at nineteen right now, and I think that it'll be moving up towards twenty-five or thirty, yes.
So that means all of our east side and north side of towns are gonna start looking like Winding Way soon, huh?
As long as it's, as long as it's affordable housing and charitable contributions, yeah.
Yeah, there's no reason why we should make that whole area turn into Winding Way.
I, I agree.
And work addition, as well, to make sure the funds spend outside.
Yeah, just so that way it's, it's spent in Reeves County, and I think that makes a lot of sense. I would personally just say within Pecos, but if you guys want to do Reeves County.
But the money's coming from somewhere else?
Correct, but it's, it's the HFC's money now.
Somebody else is taxed, somebody else is taxed.
Well, it's coming from the developers.
Yeah, the developers pay the fees.
It's basically, they're paying to partner with the HFC, and then the entities that pay four per project have that tax exemption from Chapter 392.
That's right.
Unlike, for example, Arlington, you want $1.2 million, they're, according to the next, on this.
Yeah, yeah, if, numbers are off a little bit, but, sure.
But as many of the bylaws comes over here, or two projects.
Yeah, in, in a sense, yeah.
And that's correct. The projects are great, John, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna deny you that, you're helping people here in Pecos, and that's ethically for the money, the money's coming from somewhere else.
So here, here's what I would note that I, that I find interesting, that Arlington's the test case for it. So I'm from Dallas, born and raised Dallasite, which means fortunately, unfortunately, I'm a big fan of, really the only professional team, with absolutely no apologies to Houston Texans fans, of the Dallas Cowboys. Now, in 2004, the Dallas Cowboys had struck a deal with the City of Dallas to put the new Cowboys stadium in Fair Park. Jerry Jones came to City of Dallas and said, you know, I know we have this deal, but we'd also like an extra $325 million in taxpayer dollars. City of Dallas said no. Jerry said, fine, I'll shop it. And now I gotta drive to Arlington every time, at the expense of the City of Dallas, because Arlington's looking out for their own residents, and Arlington makes millions and millions every year on the ground lease for that, because they came up with the money. It's not any different from the developer that went to the Arlington HFC, talked to the Arlington HFC and said, hey, we want to do this deal, and Arlington said no, and we did it elsewhere, because John was looking out for the citizens of Pecos. Controversial as that may be, sometimes it's important to look out for your own constituents, and I think that's what we've done here. You know, in a similar vein, there are a lot of folks at jurisdictions, like in California, that wouldn't like to see any oil and gas drilling out here, but that's not what's right for Pecos.
Yeah, and I understand that analogy that you left, Jerry Jones, the Cowboys, and by whatever, we finish well, but, because they.
Apologies.
They paid $1.2 million, but as Councilman Saldaña alluded to the last meeting, if it's not to us, it hurts our economy.
Well, I think that the.
It's just the mannerisms as to how it is, again, what you're doing with the money, helping low-income people to get their houses better. Ms. Carrasco, I drive right in front of her house every day, and I saw what y'all were doing, and I commend you for it, I do, I really do. It's just how it's come about.
I think legislation is.
Yeah, I think in the next, in the next week or so, you'll see that go away, and.
I read the legislation, I read them all the way, it is, and it's allowed, it's just still.
Well, it won't be, it won't be happening going forward here in the next couple of weeks, and I think, you know, what becomes important is focusing on, and, and what actually one of our overarching goals was to begin with here. It's just the reality of the situation is, and I love Pecos, but the reality is, it's tough to get developers out here to build affordable housing here, because it's dependent on if prices of oil is between, what is it, $65 and $78 a barrel, then housing out here booms. If it's not, if it's too low or it's too high, it dries up, and so it's hard to convince developers to come out here, and so what we've done is create excellent relationships with the best developers in the country and in the state, that I think we can bring, with the council's help, and I think this would be a great project, shiny, Class A, affordable housing to Pecos, based on the partnerships that we've made. And that is something that I think we'll look back on in 20 years and be really, really happy about, not to mention all the other help that we've done for people.
As affordable housing, or a partnership we've got with the Well Street Apartments, and I asked the gentleman, Dan, what is your definition of affordable housing? Ah, $2,000 a month in apartment. Ms. Carrasco, who's affordable?
No, you need to peg it to.
So the term, or definition of what is affordable housing, is different between you, John, me, this whole council?
And that's why we like to peg it to the area median income, so it makes sense for that area there, we use HUD and NOVAGRATIC numbers, so for example, the area median income in Dallas, 80% of that typically is what we, we reserve half the units for 80% of people that make 80% of the median income. That would be different than Odessa's, for example, and so it's pegged to the different jurisdiction, and I think when you use percentage numbers that peg it to the median income, that's how you serve people, because if we were to get a developer to come to Pecos, partnered with the HFC, partnered with the city to get the land that they need to build it, and we said, you need to reserve half these units for folks making 60% AMI, 40% for folks making 80% of AMI, 10% market, you can do whatever you want with those, build a penthouse, I don't care, but when you peg it to that, then that's where you see the real benefit, and the dollar stretches, because those are the folks that are, you know, it's serving that are here, that's pegged to the median income here. So I think that's, that's the best way to structure it, so it's not based on gross dollars, because some developer in Dallas, or Houston, or Los Angeles might have a different definition of affordable than, than would be here, right? Even though rent in Pecos is actually extremely high, mostly because of the oil companies, which, that's not a bad thing about oil companies, just saying.
Are they all closer to getting the closing statements? Are they closer to getting?
I can request those, I thought we had resolved that by sending the, the fee thing, I just have to track down developers, and not every developer will give me those.
Yeah, I just, you know, I want to see a closing statement.
Just like an example, I can get an example one.
Ten to twenty.
Sure, I can get those. I'm sure there's a couple that will play ball with me that I can get examples. The reason that it's hard with developers is because it has their capital stack in there, it has their loan amount, it has things that they don't necessarily want us to be on, so I'll have to go to them on that, but, you know, I'm sure I can find a few to play ball for you. But I sent you our best-case fee scenario, that way you can kind of extrapolate out numbers, and it would probably end up being rosier than the actual reality, because that's what we start with, and we get negotiated down sometimes, but.
I'd just like to see some.
Yeah, sure.
So do we want to bring this back to amend the articles next time?
So the Council of Grant? Yeah, let's bring it back.
You guys are racking up my frequent flyer miles. Okay, so we have a motion from Councilman Graham, a second from Councilwoman Torrio, to bring this back and change it to the, to amend the articles. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries.
And Ms. Merritt, just if I might, just so that we're, you know, efficient next time, if you want to let me work with Parker, and we'll work up some language to present to the board next time, would that be good for you guys? That way, we have something in front of you guys, you can sign off on it, because you guys actually have to vote unanimously on it, so that we can then submit it to the Secretary of State for filing, and that way, you know, we can just work on it then.
And if there are proposals that y'all want to talk to me about for two now and then, just let me know, and we can try and have it ready for you at the meeting.
And that discussion would be a conflict of interest, as you consider.
Well, no, because they're not a conflict with each other, the city controls the articles, and the HFC is bound by.
Yeah, I don't think there's, yeah, I don't think there's conflict. I'm just here for good governance.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, we'll go to item F7, discuss, consider Resolution 25-05-07R, approving an amendment to the Keep Pecos Beautiful Committee bylaws, as passed initially by the Keep Pecos Beautiful Committee, Strategic Goal Six, Sound Governments, and Physical Management, Anita Marta, Keep Pecos Beautiful Committee Chair.
I don't think they're here, they're not, she's not gonna come, they, one of them called me, and it's amendment to, they, they want to extend the terms for a few months to.
Starts in September and ends in August. You want, starts in September, ends in August?
Right.
But get appointed in September, in the meeting in August, you appoint it to start in September, and then it'll end the following year, 31st of August. Just like our agreement.
Yeah, that's what their, their red line copy.
So, I just want to align it with the budget.
May I make a motion, we approve F7 as presented?
Okay.
A second.
Have a motion from Councilman Arona, a second from Councilman Saldaña, to approve Resolution 25-05-07R as presented. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. Item F8, discuss measures to be made to protect local murals, Strategic Goal Three, promote the visual image of Pecos. All right, here we go.
I'd just like to see what we can do to protect our murals, again, I said it earlier, I don't know what we can do.
I think Holly had something, and we're discussing.
You get this. It's a lot of product out there, so, it costs real, real economical, it's five-gallon buckets of covered broken arrows, this is deep, leaded slightly with water, and.
Protective layer for them.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's our own guys can put it on.
Which we already have.
No, they have it.
Oh, you, you hasn't been done, but you have it.
They've done one.
We've actually, we've done the splash pad side and ordered some more, it's an anti-graffiti paint, it's a thin, real thin coating that goes on, we put two coats on, and it provides full protection. Someone comes up and sprays it, spray paints it, you take a power washer and wash it off. But we also, we first utilized that product in the skate park, on the murals that were painted on the bathrooms at the skate park, and have had absolutely zero issue.
Do you have to redo, redo it every few years or something?
So we will, we have recoded, and it doesn't pose any risk to the coloring of the paint, it doesn't create any kind of shadowing, it doesn't peel, it seeps directly into the porous products that the paint is on, and it's perfect in this case, because they have the, the cinder block, which is quite porous, so the paint has, has sealed up some of that, and then obviously the two coats that we put on creates another protective measure. Although I think it's great that the grant is covering these camera systems, which is necessary, really is, but this is just a second level of protection as well.
Well, I mean, if something happens, at least we can figure out, like, who did it.
That was, exactly, yes.
What about cameras and stuff?
That's what you were talking about.
Yes, sir, that's, yes.
Y'all got brand angles?
Yes. And so myself and IT Director have been working on that collaboratively, not just for the splash pad in Maxine Park, it's gonna encompass the Veterans, the Veterans Park as well, and there's some other strategic locations that we're looking at, just to protect the city's investments in these properties as well. Is Cyclone one of those locations as well?
Can.
No, we can't. You know, I know that.
I think that would be, keep, at least minimize your travels over there.
I'm still hurting over somebody, what, they do donuts and what, the deal seal?
Oh, in the very beginning, yes.
We talked about that a while, a couple of years ago.
About the camera system? Yes, sir. And I know that IT has been working on that side of it, and the good thing about these type of cameras, it can, the network grows just bigger, you know, and the ability to use that is gonna be able to not only encompass the city property, but problem areas that we see within the community, whether it's neighborhoods, or it's intersections, that type of stuff. And it can even grow bigger, like I said, the company's willing to come out, even do a presentation to business owners if they would like to invest in those type of cameras as well. You see a lot of businesses have cameras already, if they could get almost like unified in one type of camera system, it could be beneficial for, for the city as well as, as the business owner as well. And these have the ability to zoom in, like, so close, and we just kind of have to type in a description of maybe the vehicle we're looking for, and it'll pop up whatever may have crossed the paths of these cameras.
We talked about that a while, a couple of years ago.
About the camera system?
Yes, sir.
And I know that IT has been working on that side of it, and the good thing about these type of cameras, it can, the network grows just bigger, you know, and the ability to use that is going to be able to not only encompass the city property, but problem areas that we see within the community, whether it's neighborhoods, or it's intersections, that type of stuff. And it can even grow bigger. Like I said, the company's willing to come out, even do a presentation to business owners if they would like to invest in those type of cameras as well. You see a lot of businesses have cameras already. If they could get almost like unified in one type of camera system, it could be beneficial for the city as well as the business owner as well. And these have the ability to zoom in, like, so close, and we just kind of have to type in a description of maybe the vehicle we're looking for, and it'll pop up whatever may have crossed the paths of these cameras.
It's not a brainy picture like these 711 cameras.
It is not, yes.
How can you tell who it was?
Like the ATM cameras, we just forget it.
It is difficult, you know, and I think if we're able to not only show what we can do with it, but also present it to the community business neighborhoods, even if they chose to, I think it could be a really, a really interesting system that could be beneficial.
Notification alerts go a long way with sounds, so that's something that most people, is the first thing is deterred is the sound that they're being recorded. So, that's kind of instead of, I mean, you could see a camera, when a camera makes a chime or an alert, I know it does go a long way.
Like a ringing doorbell.
Sure.
This is just a term for something that they know they're being-
That's right.
You know, the sounds and/or even just smile-your-own-camera kind of thing, at least you kind of know, hey, here it is. You know, and there's some misunderstanding that some of the camera, or devices you see on red lights are cameras, and they're not. You know, and it's going to be our networking and getting partnerships with businesses and, say, Texas New Mexico, to see if we can utilize some of their poles, or how we're going to strategically get these placed. So, I'm looking forward to seeing the outcome. I'm crossing my fingers that we can make this grant work, and I think we can. And it'll tie in, like I said, to camera systems that are already here in Reeves County and Pecos.
Well, I know right now, I haven't quite a few years, but working on the DEA and FBI to mount cameras.
Yes.
To point that, to feel similar activity.
Yes, sir.
So, there is that.
I think we just, if we can continue to develop those kind of partnerships, whether it's businesses, other law enforcement collaborative efforts, which is what we are really focusing on doing, even looking at main thoroughfares into and out of the community, I think those are really big things.
Was that the camera okay?
That was probably wrong.
Huh?
That's a drawn footage that you see right there.
It was me jumping up and down.
That's it.
Oh, my gosh.
Okay, so if Holly's already got the ceiling, and we're working on cameras, I think we've got-
I think we're at least taking a really good approach to it. I think the stuff that Mr. Rocky has, I think that's very invaluable to city property with regards to graffiti-resistant type stuff. And, you know, it's not too crazy expensive, it's able to be washed off, like you said, with our own employees being able to help with that cleanup. And in the meantime, if we have camera footage, not only can we hopefully identify people, then help people accountable, and there could be restitution for that kind of stuff.
And we need to put together many years ago, in the previous job I had, was when gangs tagged something, it's good to get it off real quick, and then you can leave it alone, you let them think and know that this is a dirt area, they control the area, so as soon as you see it, clean it up, so they, and they'll come back and keep doing it.
Agreed.
Because then they're staking their territory.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, item F11, discuss, consider approving an interlocal agreement with Reeves County in defending public works projects, Strategic Goal Six, Sound Governance and Physical Management. Holly Giraki, Director of Community Services.
Mayor Council, Holly Giraki, Community Services Director. What you have in your packet, the interlocal agreement is based on several conversations we've been having with Commissioner Louise Moore. She had came to the city asking for some solutions regarding overhead lighting at, in this particular case, Martinez and Rancho Road. And additionally, she was also working with our Public Works Director Kelvin Ridgely, who's not here tonight, offering to purchase some large, I believe the three-yard containers on the east side, two, pardon?
Right.
Yes. So the standard three-yard container that was removed and replaced with the large black cans. So, anyway, we were able to obtain a design and a cost to update the lighting system in this particular area, presented it to her, and she came back and said, "I want to pay for this." I was like, "Great." She also, a portion of this, in this interlocal agreement, is estimated $125,000, and I believe those are the dollars that come from her budget that's assigned to her with the commissioners. But anyway, the balance of the containers against $29,286.30 is what it cost for 18 overhead lights, design, construction, and installation by Texas New Mexico Power. So the difference from that to the $125, around 84, maybe?
Eight-five thousand.
Eight-five thousand. Will go towards the purchase of at least, I believe, 100 three-yard containers to update into the east side, which is her precinct. So, in the interlocal that the county attorney, Ms. Alvarez, put together, there was some information, if you look down, where it identifies that Reeves County agrees to provide the city with $125,000 to be paid from current revenues available to Reeves County for the above-described public works projects. And so, in her description, I noticed the street signs were in there too. I've yet to have an opportunity to speak to her about the street signs, because we had that fully budgeted and are literally in the process of upgrading street signs. But further down, it does say, "Use of the town of Pecos City's landfill for a period of 24 months, free of charge based on historical usage in the past two years." The historical usage was identified by documentation provided, but it's going to be for up to two years. And then the use of the city's marquee for advertising announcements, free of charge for up to two years. The marquee that she's referring to is the boot that we are-
No, we don't have it yet.
We don't have it yet.
But we're working on it.
Yeah.
We're working on it.
Yeah, we don't have it yet. So I know that you're going to be bringing it back to Hot Tex eventually, I believe, right? So, in a nutshell, though, I think it was great that they wanted to partner with us, absorb these, this cost in order to upgrade the lights. The city is responsible for each of those lamps after the fact, but it's very helpful for them, for the county, to allow Louise to absorb this cost along with the dumpsters.
The landfill, the landfill piece that we're getting up for about $24,000.
There.
Over two years, yeah. $25,000 for 24.
For a period of 24 months, yes, two years.
What are we doing with the old, with the trash containers, are you going to auction them, sell them? Uh, well, that's what we're looking at, honestly, right now. It's my biggest concern, and I've had it with multiple council members, I think I have with you, as we have three trucks that, we're going to have to find a place to reuse these 300-gallon containers. There's not any doubt about that. I can tell you, Councilman Graham, he doesn't like them. But then Leo-
Well, Judge Hunt says his is perfect. He loves his black container back there, so.
But, we're looking at places to repurpose, because I want to utilize the trucks. I do not want to run auction trucks under three years old, because we will come out with a wrong end of the deal.
You said we'll come up with a solution to anchor them or secure them a little bit better?
We've tried a bunch of different ways, and if you anchor them too much, you get them too heavy, the truck can't pick them up.
And I know how much the cost would be to do, like I said, a couple, about a two-foot piece of round metal, so where they sit inside.
I like park sometimes.
Yeah, yes, ma'am. I don't know.
And the bigger, I mean, I still look at it, that they're still in the alleys, I mean, all of this is still alley, and we have more than I like property damage because of trash trucks in the alleys. And I wish we didn't have to have alleys, but that's not what the community is looking for. It's something that, and as a, just as a, for example, in phase three, the piece that we're talking about now with the, that we're working on with the county and the hospital, to build the townhomes, those will be serviced with my six-gallon home parks, the containers that'll be curbside, and the trucks that we have now take care of that. If Council sees okay, and we get our way, when we develop the subdivision that's going to be through the east of the ballpark, I would, I would like to design it to where it is curbside delivery with that, so that we can fully utilize those trucks in a much better way.
Well, the little color set for, after on, is going to build those houses in Jackson, and we'll get-
Yeah, we can give it a shot there, yes, ma'am.
Because I don't think there's alleys around all over there.
They may not be, so they may have to be-
I know they back in on my side.
Yes, ma'am.
Because they don't, they can't blow it.
Yeah, and that's not safe either, when trucks are having to do that.
Right.
They're already behind your house, they're already in one of our electric facilities, the mayor's facilities.
Yeah, we got to find some more safer solutions, not make it more difficult. I mean, driving a trash truck is not easy already.
Like where I live, it'd be kind of inadvisable, because everybody, high school, all the way to Long Beach Street, everybody parts them, and everybody has more than one vehicle.
Yeah, they do. Yeah, that's where the difficulty is. You know, it's plastic ones, and you, if you've got something big to put in, you need both hands to put both lids, just on. And then I have to bend down, get it, put it in there.
Get a, get a, get a yardstick, a couple yardsticks.
This is not, this is not be created.
So, it's not even-
May I make a motion to approve F11? Just presenting Holly Giraki, Borough here for Community Services. I'll take it.
Have a motion from Councilman Arona, a second from Councilman Saldana, to approve the interlocal agreement with Reeves County as presented. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries. Go to item F12, discuss, consider resolution 25-05-08R, a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a construction agreement with ZTEC Construction in the amount of $133,500 for the reconstruction of a records facility to be located at 209 South Cypress Street, Strategic Goal Six, Sound Governance and Physical Management. Holly Giraki, Director of Community Services.
Mayor Council, in your packet, you see the resolution. The city has recently acquired property across the street from City Hall to absorb, have an opportunity to absorb the overflow of our permanent records and files, building plans, et cetera. Apparently, we like killing trees, and we have a lot of boxes. Okay, so, but it's necessary, it's a necessary evil. I did speak to a couple of contractors to get the bids for the, reconfigure this structure. Apparently, it was required quite a bit. And ZTEC won this proposal by being over $100,000 less.
Slower.
Yeah. But it does provide, it is providing a solution for our record keeping, it really is. It is a fairly large facility, it's just going to be for storage, but we do have to reconfigure the inside of that, of that structure, which means everything, the ceiling.
Temperature controlled.
It has to be temperature controlled.
Because it can be slightly elevated in case of flooding.
So it's, it is actually already elevated, but the repair will be done to the backside of the building as well, where there's some damage to the stucco. There's a hole on the northwest corner, so all of the back end is going to be addressed, they're going to address the canopy, the carport piece that's on the back, so that we can utilize that as the unloading access. But it will only have electrical and HVAC. It's not going to have any plumbing in it. It is solely for record keeping, and it does provide easy access for finance, HR, and building primarily, to go over, store products, and then be able to locate them fairly quickly.
Are we, is it for papers?
Yes, correct.
Are we doing our records into digital yet, or?
So we have some that are digital, and I'm not, I'm a novice when it comes to what actually has to be hard copy, but from what I see here, there's, apparently, we are required to have certain files that are permanent due to the municipal government. Sarah is the master person, the master of knowledge in permanent files and destruction of files as well. So, it is going to also help her free up some space with all of the collection of files that actually are compiled here, usually for a full year before they're picked up to be destroyed. And that can encompass 30, 40 boxes of files.
We are exploring options for digitizing.
Yeah.
Do you destroy them?
We have the company called RCI that comes out once a year. Yes, and they also do our retention, they'll go through it and let us know what we need to hold on to for four years, five years, and then they'll come back and destroy those.
But you're, you're digitizing everything that you could just do.
Yes, yes, ma'am, but there are a few things that we do have to keep, such as plans, plans, things like that, and-
Yes. We have, yeah, we have a lot. And we have, we have, they've been scanned and digitized, but yes, we have to have the-
The hard copy.
Yeah, yeah. And there are multiple sizes, there are multiple sizes. Some are pretty large, and some of them are, you know, fairly small, but no rhyme or reason, and, you know, so we've been very creative in putting together a storage system. This is going to allow us to be a lot more organized.
So this was a batch bid?
Yes, sir, it was.
Well, I'll make the motion that we approve resolution 25-05-08R.
Second.
Have a motion from Councilman Saldana, a second from Councilman Carrasco, to approve resolution 25-05-08R as presented. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries.
Thank you.
Item F14, discuss, consider resolution 25-05-09R, amending the master fees scheduled, oil and gas application and permit fees, Strategic Goal Six, Sound Governance and Physical Management. Hector Carrasco.
So last week, we approved a total of eight drilling permits at $4,000 each, so that's, what, $32,000. The BLM, which is the Bureau of Land Management, averages a permit between $10,000 to $15,000. And I did talk to Sarah about this, and I know you had mentioned at one point, we're looking at $15,000. And I asked her, "How do we determine this process?" And this process, you told me, is mirrored by other communities. So I consulted with a lot of the oil and gas officers from Midland, Odessa, Andrews, and they said that their ordinance hasn't been updated since 2010. So, they agree, they too should be going up on their permits. And if our permit applications were where they needed to be, due to inflation and all, at $15,000, we would have had an extra $88,000 on our, on our table. That's money that we, that's money that we've been losing throughout the years. And in reality, if we were to take this down, they should be marrying us, not us marrying them, because we're a pretty highly active drilling community. So that's just money left on the table.
Well, with all the activity that's going on, and, and the way everything has risen up, I figured the permits, the fees, you know, for drilling, were sooner or later going to go up. And I didn't know that, how far up they were going, but if this is what's the norm, I think we need to get, get with it. I mean, you know, we don't want to get to the, to the point that, because they're not going to stop drilling, regardless, they recoup their money. So if we can do this, I think it's something that we need, we need to address, whatever it takes for us to, to pick it up. I mean, we're already, the councilman Carrasco said, the last one came, eight of them, and I guarantee you, there's going to, a few more coming.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, I kind of agree, I agree with what she's proposing here.
Who do you, who do you want to look at dollars for a minute, like $15,000? What do you think?
What's the going rate?
The issue is, it's all over the place, and then Hector did the research, and Bureau of Land Management was the same.
Well, that article was 2019.
Yeah, exactly.
Consulted, so, I mean-
Yeah, so it's, it's old. Midland, like you said, hadn't done it for a long time. Shame on them, because the cost has gone up.
Well, shame on us, let's do it.
I mean, we have, we have, as Councilman Saldana and Carrasco said, we have, we have the resources underneath us like no one else does, especially for gas. So, they're not going anywhere else, they don't have a choice, so. So they're not going anywhere else. They don't have a choice, so.
So I'm just thinking, in the last six months, we've had two, three different companies come to us for drilling permits.
Yep.
So, yeah, I mean, we're gonna, we're gonna keep coming.
And I mean, I, you know, I'm an accountant, so I'm looking at it. I mean, that $15,000 was good to me, but.
And that same company's coming back for more.
Oh, yeah.
It was up to me to do twenty more. Where's my grandfather, right?
It's up to council, and council gets a directive, and whatever guidance you all decide on is what it's going to be. Make a motion.
Well, to be honest with you, it's not like they're going to say, we'll just go drill and pork stock because it's cheaper.
No.
So, I mean, in reality, I make a motion to amend, change it from $4,000 to $20,000.
I'll second.
To, to what?
Twenty thousand.
I have a motion from Councilman Carrasco, a second from Councilman Graham, to amend our fee schedule to read $20,000 for drilling permit. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries.
Don't bulk it.
So I need to publish it in the newspaper and then it'll be effective. So next Thursday, ten days after next Thursday, it'll become effective.
Okay, item F-15, discuss, consider postponing or rescheduling the regular, regular city council meeting scheduled for Thursday, January, June, this 26, 2025. This is Strategic Oil, Sykes, Open and Consistent Communications, Sarah Nichols.
Okay, Mayor and Council, this is just the one we typically bring up. It's the week of rodeo, so typically we schedule the item when that's the one we have every year.
So we're gonna have a meeting.
So I want to have it. That's a y'all's discretion.
But Sarah will be here.
Yes, I will.
So the rodeo starts on Wednesday?
I'm sorry, yes, Monday, Wednesday.
So we can have it Tuesday?
Or, or, yeah, I hate, I hate long agendas. Look at the time. I'm supposed to be asleep by now.
We're not crew yet.
Yes.
Right, Holly?
Yes.
Thank you.
And moving it up a week is just not enough time between the two meetings, and skipping it within the next one's just too long. Throw your week.
I think.
It's like Christmas.
It is, it's like, it's.
I make a motion, we put it for the twenty-four.
We're gonna have a topic after the rodeo parade. We can do it for a week.
That's your department. That's what you do. Yes.
You can't, you have trouble meeting for a while. I do, but it's, I mean, it's a road.
We can do it Tuesday. It's a y'all's choice.
That's my motion. It's, I suggested.
Tuesday, June 24?
It'll be on a Tuesday. My second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilman Arona, a second from Councilman Saldana, that we post, we reschedule our June 26 meeting to June 24. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let the record show the motion carries.
Keep the agenda small, that would.
Okay, and we have executive session?
Move it.
Okay, so we will now go into executive session under Government Code Section 551.071, consult consultation with attorney 551.072 Real Estate, 551.074 Personnel Issues, and 551.087 Economic Development, and it is 8:41 PM.
Session, it is 9:39 PM. Is there anything from executive session that needs to be brought to open session?
Mr. Graham's request for outside legal counsel. You want to bring that up or?
Uh, for the next meeting I guess.
Yeah. Oh, the special meeting next week?
But nothing else maybe we throw that?
No ma'am.
Okay. So items for our next meeting, which will be the special meeting next week?
Just waiting, um, the bylaws, no, they're not.
The articles?
The articles. You already had it?
Yes.
It's bad.
Anything else for our next meeting, next regular meeting?
Did you still want the item on the placement of Pecosville on there?
Yeah, just to discuss, just to make sure. I know this uh, beyond aggressive, but I want to make sure that the city knows that some regular that that support.
You know, ready?
I did not, I gotta go set mine.